Hard unions can't even clean up their mess, huh?
Debbie Crumley's husband and I used to sit in the back row of the Baptist church every Sunday. As far back as we could get. He'd just give you a thumbs up there.
Good morning, everyone. It is, uh, what is today? The, uh, 17th of April? If you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for attending. Did you have an officer report this morning?
I do. I have a couple things real quick. First, I have a little, uh, confession to make here. This file, Mr. Chair... This file, Mr. Chair, was left at my door.
Okay.
And, uh, I thought it was an empty file. And I come back about a week later, and I realize it is a birthday card to you. So, I'm not gonna ask for the specific date.
We found where it was lost at, right?
Was it you that put the... Happy birthday, whenever the date is.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That was from the 2nd of February.
Huh? No. So, uh, officers down. Yes, we lost, uh, three more, four more, I'm sorry. Uh, I believe night before last. That makes the total for, uh, four and a half months, right at thirty-three. And I think you're probably aware, we also lost two...
Two Marines.
Two Marines in Afghanistan about three days ago. That makes the total for the year. Military deaths, right at twelve. So, um, Mr. Chair, I have one more thing that I don't want to wait till Commissioner's report. It'll take a few minutes. I've never... Thank you. Okay?
If you would join us for a moment of silence for the fallen.
Okay, I'll make this fast. I've never asked the pilot for a, uh, a reproof or a correction, but this is the article. I have it up here, but I won't take that time. It just says that Voice, uh, after, uh, challenging Commissioner Gold on letterheads. What I have here for the public, these are just a small sample. The letters are written since they've become Commissioner. They all just single out one Commissioner, okay? Except for House Bill 2379, which we all approved, and that's on my portion of the county website. So, these are for you. Anybody, it's public information. Go to the documents and see if any of them said Board of Commissioners. You were gonna mention, uh, we were gonna say a little tribute to Jim Auburn. I'd like to add, subject to your approval, Mr. Chair Ron Fowler from South Coast, London.
Okay.
If I may.
Sure.
Okay.
All right. So, moving on, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
Uh, 6B, I believe, should be taken out of consent agenda because we're supposed to appoint one person, is my understanding, and there were three applicants.
6B, the entire thing?
Well, it says appoint member, or excuse me, should be little b under B appointments.
Okay.
I understand we're doing one. Is that correct?
That was my understanding in reading the information.
So, you wanna move, remove 6BB?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other amendments to the agenda?
If I may, Mr. Chair. Uh, 6, um... 6BC, approved Commissioner Gold's lays-on-to-emergency services. I wanna postpone that until we can have our goal-setting workshop that is probably gonna, I think it might be next week, but more likely would be in, uh, early May. So, I wanna just pull that and table that, uh, and set for a later date.
So, they're both, you want the 6BC removed as well?
6BC, yes, correct. And I also have one more.
Go ahead.
Uh, 6C, C and D, running Parks Director, changing name. I just want a little more time to understand that and follow that and, uh, visit with, uh, Director Schmelzer and bring that later on before the board and see how much of a priority that should be. So, I would request that we remove that from the agenda, at least for today.
All right. And if I could make a note for JJ, um, if we do like a 6B or a 6C instead of another A, B, or C, could we do like a 6B123? It just gets a little 6BB, gets a little confusing kind of a thing. So, it just makes it a little clearer. All right. So, we're looking to remove, you have another one?
When you're ready, yes.
Go ahead.
It can be under other, um, if that's convenient for the board. Otherwise, I need, or would like to ask for Board approval on a letter of support, uh, for the Highway 101 repairs and improvements to the, it's not just to ODOT, but also, uh, through the Southwest Area Commission, or Commission on, uh, Transportation. And then, in addition, the Oregon Transportation Commission. I have a letter that I sent in late yesterday that I completed, um, against subject to Board approval. I think that letter needs to go out as soon as possible, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So, you're wanting to add that into what part of the agenda?
Uh, action item, maybe, uh, 8BC. And I'm sorry I didn't provide a copy of that.
Okay. And we're, this is about a letter?
To the Oregon Transportation Commission requesting immediate attention, Highway 101, particularly between Gold Beach and Brookings. I can, I can read that letter too, if you'd like.
That's fine. For right now, we'll, we'll hold on. Do you have anything, Ms. Schmelzer?
I just have a question on why we're, um, not going to discuss the Plan Commission member at all today.
Oh, we just need to add back in the agenda.
We could just put it in the agenda rather than pull it.
Okay, 'cause it said remove it.
That was my intention, because it was, pick one member out of three applicants. It didn't make sense.
You wanted to move it, and Commissioner Boyce said remove it, but it's move it. Okay.
Yeah.
Just wanna make sure we don't delete that.
Okay. So, we're going to move 6BB up, or where, where would you like to place that? Under present, or not under presentations, but under, uh...
How about ABD?
ABD?
Be the last one on the action item.
How about 8C? Create 8C?
Okay.
Okay, great.
And that is the, uh... Planning Commission.
Also, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Boyce?
Uh, also, I'd like to request a ballot vote on that, if I may. Uh, it's gonna be more difficult for me all the time to vote for very, very qualified people. Three in this case, certainly. And yet, uh, in the, in the interest of making an effort to avoid any hard feelings, um, if the Board's amenable to that.
Okay. So, I think I have all this straight. Have any other amendments to the agenda? Roll, please.
Mr. Gold?
I don't think we've had a motion yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Make a motion.
Uh, I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Have a second? I'll second that. Any further comments? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried?
Public comments? Mr. Barnes?
Good morning, David Barnes. I just want to congratulate you on anniversary. I believe that either yesterday, today, or tomorrow is a hundred days in office.
Oh, thanks.
So, um, and then on the downside of that, I wanna point out that, um, in those hundred days, this commission has either spent, committed to spending, or proposed spending over $330,000. So, you know, you're $3,300 a day, um, so, right up till now. Not all of it's been approved, some of it's gone away, but you're still, you're at over $330,000 in a hundred days. So, thank you.
Appreciate the love. Thank you. Can we, uh, turn down this, these microphones at the podium, please? They're a little hot. Thank you. All right, recognitions and awards. So, everyone knows Summer has purchased a, uh, a card for Mayor Auburn, and it is in, uh, on the desk in JJ's office. If any of the staff here would like to write a personal note to Jim's wife, I'm sure it would be much appreciated. But, uh, as everyone knows, we lost Jim Auburn this week, and, uh... He was a good servant in this county for many, many years. Recognitions also to Karen Kennedy, Ms. Schmelzer?
Um, we just wanna publicly thank Karen Kennedy, um, for her service on the Plan Commission. She provided eight years of service at that Plan Commission. Plan Commissions are a pretty difficult commission to serve on, so we're really grateful for the time that she has put in there, and we will be sending her a thank you.
And then we're going to also recognize Penny Hudgens?
Correct. Penny Hudgens currently is working in the Community Development Department. She works for Building Safety and Planning. Shelley Creighton is, uh, who also works in Building Safety, has pretty much been training her and, uh, running a one-man operation, basically Shelley was doing by herself, and Penny stepped in to help her. So, um, on behalf of Becky, Becky, do you wanna just come forward to a little bit? But I've asked, um, so, for those of you that don't know, Becky is the Planning Director. Shelley works in Building Safety. We don't have a Building Safety official, Building Official right now, so Shelley's pretty much been running the show down there. And then Penny helps with both of those departments. Penny also worked in Juvenile for a while, and I think some other areas in the county. She has twenty-five years of service into the county, so we just wanted to acknowledge her. And, um, with Shelley being her suito supervisor right now, um, just ask Shelley if she could say a few words and present Penny with an award.
Well, I think that the county is very lucky to have Penny. She could pretty much, uh, run most of the departments, I think, you know? Give it a little bit of time. She's got great organizational skills, and I'm very blessed and lucky to have her because it's been a long haul down there. And she's just an amazing, amazing, amazing employee. You don't want me to pin that on you, I know, 'cause I've got shaky hands. Award, that should be gold.
Thank you.
And you're not a flower person, but I am. Thank you, Penny.
Commissioner Boyce?
Well, I got here six thirty this morning. You were already here. It's hard to beat you to work. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Deputy Brian Bros is, uh, recognition, or...
Brian.
Ryan Bros, I'm sorry.
Ryan Brosey. So, we're here to, uh, celebrate five years of employment with, uh, the Curry County Sheriff's Office for Ryan Brosey. He started out in Corrections, and that's where he, he's at. He's been given many assignments and duties, extra duties, that he, he does. And he's, I don't know what, actually what we do without him. He takes care of all our transport arrangements for, uh, individuals. But, like I say, uh, he's here today, uh, and we're here to, uh, congratulate him on this five years of completion of, with the Curry County Sheriff's Office. I know his family's here as well, and, uh, without family support, none of us would be here. So, I just wanna congratulate Ryan for his five years with service. And I told him he had to give about a three-minute speech at least.
It's not gonna be three minutes. I promise. Uh, thanks, Sheriff. It's been a very fast five years. I can't believe it's gone by that quickly. Um, and I hope to be able to serve the community that I've, uh, been born and raised in for a lot more years to come.
Well, we're happy to have you, and we're blessed to have you.
Thank you for your service.
Ron Fowler. Ron Fowler. Ron Fowler, South Coast.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Ron Fowler passed away, uh, the day before yesterday. He and Alan Ford of Roseburg, London, forty years ago, started their long-term, um, efforts to, to employ a lot of people. He built an empire down there where they required to employ just less than 500 people, 180 loads of logs a day. I had the honor of taking a ride with him, uh, right after the Cheko Bar fire, and he took me to his plantation that he was extremely proud of. Trees that were all about anywhere from two, three, four, five feet, and a good portion of those burned. Tough day for him. It was a surprise. I'm not sure exactly what happened, uh, but he will be incredibly missed. Uh, I also had the honor of working for his father in, in the summer of 1973. Just a tremendous family. Brother Larry moved to Idaho. He was a logger of the family. I think he's doing okay. I'm gonna be hoping and praying that some real good leadership, uh, quickly comes into place for those two mills down there, as you all know how critical that is to our, um, to our county, our economy. And just a, just a tribute to his life and the tremendous things that he accomplished in his forty years of running that mill. Moment of silence. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, next thing on the agenda is, uh, 4E, Proclaiming of April Child Abuse and Prevention Awareness Month. Ms. Schmelzer?
Um, yes, we had a request from Jackie Antounis, I believe, that came from Jackie Antounis, um, to do a proclamation, um, for the month. She was going to be here to actually, um, talk about it, so I'm not sure why she's not here. But, um, basically, we do know that we want to recognize Child Abuse Awareness Month. We want, you've seen the blue spinners out on the courthouse lawn. That is in recognition of the month as well, um, very critical. Jackie Antounis does a ton of work on this with Wally's House and through the DAA's office. So, we just want to, um, actually ask the Board to proclaim, or I should say, pass the resolution, proclaiming Child Abuse Awareness Month for Curry County. Sheriff, did you have anything to add?
No, not to that, but one other thing after you're done with that.
I, uh, I don't have a problem. I, I would love to sign this proclamation and join our, our President and our federal government as well to, uh, to proclaim this.
Do you want me to, do you want me to read it?
Sure.
Okay. So, whereas nearly five children die every day in America from abuse and neglect, and whereas a high number of children ages zero to seventeen in Curry County, Oregon, are victims of neglect and abuse each year, and whereas President Donald Trump has proclaimed the month of April as National Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month, and whereas the victory over child abuse and neglect will not be achieved without the support of the entire community and recognition of the importance of awareness raising to decrease incidence of abuse and to support child abuse victims and their families. And whereas each April, Curry County's Wally's House, Curry Child Abuse Intervention Center, and other supporters of the child advocacy and abuse prevention movement ask the community to join the outreach efforts to reduce and prevent child abuse. Now, therefore, the Board of Curry County Commissioners hereby resolves claim to proclaim April 2019 to be Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month.
I'm up for that.
I'm fine.
Thank you for that work, Director Schmelzer. Excellent.
That was Jackie Antounis, but I'll pass. I'll relay that.
You made sure we heard it. Thank you.
Sheriff?
Uh, I just wanted to also say that the Governor, excuse me, uh, claimed this week as Telecommunicators Week for this, uh, across the state. So, um, even though I appreciate that so much, and because they are our lifeline, our backbone and everything, I think they need to be recognized every day of the year, because without them, we would, we wouldn't have the safety that we have. They make sure when they send us to a, a high-profile case, that we get home. So, I can't, uh, say enough about our dispatch communications.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Council Huddle?
Sheriff, is there also a drug take-back event this month, or...
I was gonna bring that up.
Oh, thanks. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I didn't know that.
Let the sheriff, he'll tell you.
Yes, there is, and we, we have, uh, participated in that for several years, uh, for the drug take-back. We have, uh, a place that we set up in, in the Harbor area and here in Gold Beach for those who wish to, uh, give back, uh, prescription drugs that are outdated or say, for instance, somebody, uh, has passed away in their family and they have a bunch of medications, um, that they just wanna get rid of, they can bring them down to the Curry County Sheriff's Office on our Harbor, Harbor substation and dispose of those. And we will collect those and, um, dispose them.
I think that's April 27th, but...
Hey, I don't know the exact date.
It's the 27th, yes.
All right. Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Gold? Commissioner Gold?
Do you do that, uh, during the year also? 'Cause I know when my mother passed, she had quite a few narcotics, and I went down to the police station and was able to get rid of those.
Even though it's, it's, it's a day that we select to do that, but anytime that anybody needs to bring some of those in, we will take them and dispose of them.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Presentations, personal action forms, Julie Swift. She was here a moment ago, and she's gone now. Why don't we do this, Sheriff? Uh, we'll move you into her slot, and then hopefully when she gets back, she can do her presentation. So, if you want it at this time, we can do the K-9 presentation.
Absolutely. Here again, Sheriff for the Curry County Sheriff's Office. What I'm trying to do this year is to bring back a K-9 program for the Curry County Sheriff's Office. And we are here today to give a presentation on the K-9 program. Uh, the Curry County Sheriff's Office used to have a K-9 program back in the day, like, early 1990s, late 90s, early 2000s. We had two dogs that were both cross-certified in protection and drugs. The K-9 program was, back then, was disbanded due to the finances that were not being overseen properly. And then when the dogs got to the end of their service career, uh, they were not replaced. It was a blow to the Sheriff's House back then to not have a K-9 program because of the drugs, you know, the ever-increasing drug problems that we have. The benefits of having a K-9 program are numerous, and there is overwhelming support from our community as it is. We haven't even brought this to the community yet, but we're already getting donations to help support that program. We are fortunate to have trained, certified deputies who already have experience and knowledge to make the program successful. Here today to give you a presentation on is Deputy Josh Teeter, Deputy David Virchell, and both were hired from, by us about a year ago from Nevada. Both were certified deputies and were part of a K-9 program, program in their prospective agencies. Also, we have, are very fortunate to have Brad Alcorn here. He is a volunteer who retired from Fresno PD in California. He was part of their K-9 program. Actually, uh, what I understand, ran the program and became very successful, you know? And down there, it's, it's a lot different from up here, but he'll be able to explain to you the benefits of having a K-9 program and what we can, uh, get from it. So, uh, he's offered his assistance and experience and knowledge in helping us get this program going. So, at this point, I'm gonna bring up, uh, the, the two deputies and Brad and to give you a presentation on that.
You and I had a conversation last week about another topic, but you, you mentioned something to me about a tester, something that you did last week with a couple of dogs. Would you wanna share that with us?
Uh, yeah. We, uh, we're part of SINT, South Coast Interagency Narcotics Team. And, uh, we're trying to, they're having issues with finances up there to try to keep that program going because it's with Coos and Curry Counties. But they have a K-9 up there that they brought down here to work with us, and, 'cause we've had some problems with a known drug house. Uh, the deputies watch vehicles leave from there. They develop probable cause to stop them, and as soon as they stopped them, the K-9 got out and hit on every three and got, um, narcotics on all three vehicles. So, I, I, that's only just a little taste of what we could do. Uh, had to put a damper on the problems we're having with the, uh, the drugs. And we all know that the drugs lead to other things, you know? Not only family, domestic abuses and things like that, but all the burglaries and thefts. People wanna steal to support their habits. So, uh, with getting a K-9 program started, we're going to definitely put a huge dent in our drug problems. So, thank you, Josh, Dave, Brad.
I have a PowerPoint.
There he comes.
Here comes the...
That's the brains of the operation there.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Which one? This one, the keyboard. Oh, right here. My name's Josh Teeter. I've been here for about a year now, from Las Vegas. Prior to that, I was with the Knight County Sheriff's Office. I was K-9 unit. I had a dual-purpose dog, German Shepherd, him right there. He's patrol slash narcotic. He got medically retired when I came up here, so I have him. And so, we'll start. So, introduction, law enforcement agencies have utilized dogs for over 115 years. A single K-9 team is just as effective as ten patrol officers. Canines do 97% of their work through their noses. Canines have approximately 220 million olfactory cells in their noses. We only have about 5 million. So, that shows a lot. Police dogs are required to fall under stricter guidelines and trainings to ensure they have appropriate fit for the community they serve. We have to do training with them, monthly. It's by state law, case law. Canines can cover the same ground in a fraction of time when conducting searches. Little history, police dogs were used between 1899 and 1901 in Belgium. 1907, New York City began to utilize police dogs. In the late 1950s, Baltimore started to implement K-9 units and had very successful results. Today, there are thousands of K-9 units and teams throughout the United States in both large cities and small towns. That's my dog, or the TV stars. Canines are the most powerful tool to prevent crime. So, task cost-effective. These are very beneficial to the county. Man hours saved by having a K-9 team present when conducting building searches, area searches, and drug searches. That way, we can get patrol back on the road quicker to go answer calls for service instead of, right now, it's, it could be someone on South County, go all the way north. This will clear up searches way quicker, 'cause the dog knows powerful. Uh, they search for items such as evidence, as well as criminals, drugs, lost individuals, get patrol back available for calls quicker. K-9 units have been shown to declare crimes such as residential and commercial break-ins. My dog, when that dog's in the car, he switches. He go to traffic stop, make contact with a person. He's in the back just barking up a storm. People get that effect, like, oh my God, there's a dog here. I don't wanna do anything. I'm not gonna go do anything, 'cause I don't wanna get bit, all that stuff. Uh, they can neutralize high-risk situations, keeping an officer on active duty instead of losing him or her to injury or worse. That's the same thing. People won't fight us. Usually, when they're under drugs, especially methamphetamine, they want to fight. They, they don't have a fear, and having a dog can neutralize that. Again, uh, drug arrests will go up, which will create assets through the Sheriff's Office, through drug forfeiture. We'll touch on that a little later, but there's a slide. I'll show you in a slide next. K-9 units send strong messages to the public that the Sheriff's Office is cracking down on drug offenses. Canines provide added safety to officers on the street. More arrests are made, safer without incidents, injury, or death. Canines give criminals that psychological effect. So, right here, this is from my old agency, uh, assets, the money, that's $20,000. So, right here, this is from my old agency, uh, assets, the money, that's twenty thousand my dog hit. Dogs can hit on currency if they have any odor. That will come back to the agency, whatever agency involved, it's just us and we get all that, obviously, we have to split it up and all that stuff. But that could help fund the department, help fund the county. Um, those are just through cars. Search warrant, that was found way quick, instead of going around the house and having ten officers searched, the dog just found that quick.
Can I? I hate to interrupt your presentation, just the second picture top left.
That's meth.
Meth.
Yeah.
Got the sparkle to it.
So, yeah, that's from that first one where there was gun in it, so...
Thank you.
Those are all from traffic stops, except for this one, that's from a search warrant in the house. So, there's different plot, uh, dog breeds, German Shepherds, uh, Malinois's, Labs, Poodle, or Bloodhounds and Spaniels. Our goal is to be using a Belgian Malinois and a Labrador. So, German Shepherds, the pros to those. German Shepherds are the most famous and used police dogs. Fast, agile, intelligent, and have very high work drive. Their size and raw talent in the fields of criminal apprehension and narcotic detection are almost unparalleled. Officer superior protection to handler and officer on scene due to their dedication to their handler and task at hand. Know when to be aggressive and gentle, perfect breed for dual purpose. Some cons to that are their stereotype to bite. Everyone's scared of German Shepherds, you see one, and a lot of people are stereotyped just cause they're scared to get bit. My dog's sweet as you could be, unless he thinks you're attacking me, then it's not cool. German Shepherds are notorious for hip problems when they start to get old and they also, but they can be avoided with the research of bloodline. For instance, um, my German Shepherd, um, go out on a call, I have a violent person, I could put him, we train him in our patrol certification, he could be, plots, lay down, and he could be watching me, so while I'm patting down the suspect or handcuffing, that guy turns on me, the dog's gonna automatically attack. If not, he's sitting right there. He's not gonna do anything until you tell him to. So, that's a huge officer safety thing also. So, Belgian Malinois, pros, they're the second most utilized police dog. They're highly intelligent, high work drive, very agile. They got a strong frame that makes them durable for the grilling conditions that tracks put on the K-9 team. So, the body out here, you got the woods, everyone, at least at nighttime, everyone runs from us, it's hard to see them, dogs will be able to do the terrain really well. Uh, don't have hip problems like German Shepherds, they're also fit for dual purpose. Cons, they're very hyperactive, hyperactive. So, here's a Belgian Malinois. Um, our goal is to get one, we got lined up, hopefully.
What do they weigh about, looks like fifty pounds?
Um, up to a bit. I think some weigh ninety. Sixty-five, ninety?
Thanks.
Then I'm gonna switch over to Dave.
I'm Dave Verchell, I've been with the Sheriff's Office since July of last year, I came from Las Vegas Metro Police. Um, I retired out of there.
Could you step up to the mics, please? They're gonna come out and tell you you have to.
Sorry. Uh, I retired out of Las Vegas and, uh, was looking for a home and I, I think I found it here, I'm, I'm very happy to be here and I'm hoping that you guys will support this K-9 program, cause it would really benefit the county. Um, the reason why Josh has me talking about Labrador Retrievers is because I've, I currently work a lab and I have worked labs. I've worked, uh, all the dogs that Josh has mentioned and, uh, I basically bring to the, the agency, the ability of, uh, the training and the knowledge of how to work the dogs. Uh, Brad has all the legal ends and he knows all the ins and outs of how to run the unit. Um, I've, I've just been hands-on with dogs my entire career, since nineteen ninety, I've been working dogs. Um, so Labrador Retrievers basically are everyone's friend. Uh, they're very friendly dogs and, uh, it's a big PR tool, but they have great noses and, uh, the only drawback to a lab is you don't use it for protection, you don't apprehend anyone with this dog. Uh, you can track with this dog, search and rescue, narcotics, cadaver, those things, but you're not gonna make an apprehension with that dog, nor would you want to. But, um, I'll let Josh carry on the rest of it, cause he was doing good and I'll step down later. Thanks. Did awesome.
So, just like you said, they're, uh, people pleasers. These are dogs you wanna bring to schools and show the community out and about, people pet them. They're a less aggressive breed, they're agile, strong, intelligent. Cons is they're not animal protection. Um, say they got significant health concerns once they get older, and they're single purpose. But you could use them dual-purpose, it's not protection. So, liability, uh, you got accidental bites cause the greatest. Repetitions, because they often lead to le- litigation in the which towns. Sheriff's Office and individual officers can be found responsible for damage caused by a dog bite. That's rare, it's all about obedience, the more you train with obedience, the more, um, accidental bites are less gonna occur. Regular obedience training conducted by the handler is necessary to help prevent accidental bites and behavior issues. K-9 only bites when absolutely necessary. Police dogs are considered as a non-lethal force option. So, agency liability, you got the respondent superior, and employer is responsible for the actions of employees performed within the course of their employment. The principal becomes liable for the actions of the agent, even if the principal did not directly commit the act. Three considerations generally, was the act committed within the time and space limits of the agency? Was the offense incidental to or of the same general nature as responsibility the agent is authorized to perform? Was the agent, agent motive, motivated to any degree to benefit the principal by committing the act? Vicarious liability, legal dictionary definition is the imposition of liability on one person for the actionable conduct of another based solely on a relationship between the two persons indirect or imputed legal responsibility for acts of another, for example, the liability of an employer for the acts of an employee. So, there's eight liability areas for the department. Negligent appointment or failure to appoint, handler section and dog selection, that's the most important decision, and who's gonna be the handler, who's gonna be in charge of the program. Make, uh, failure to retain, monthly review of K-9 team, we have to do logs, every day we train, we have to do logs, obedience, patrol, whatever we do, we log it. Uh, failure to entrust, entrusting the K-9 handler, potential for use of force. You don't wanna do, put a guy in charge of a K-9 that's just gonna make bad calls and go let the dog bite people, that's not what it's about. Failure to assign, K-9 use, is out of scope, exceeding the dog's capability, unavailability, ability. Failure to direct, on-scene supervisor, knowledge of a K-9 deployment. Deployment consists with the written agency K-9 policy, K-9 handler has ultimate authority not to deploy K-9. When we show up, we decide if it's a, the right situation to deploy the dog. I've, we created a policy that's very strict on what we can do as a K-9 handler or K-9 team. Uh, failure to train, the three issues of that is standard training and certification. Here in Creek County, we would get trained in both Oregon State and, uh, the California CNTA, cause we're right here on the border. Uh, failure to supervise applies to all supervisors, from the trainer to the sheriff. So, low man at the podium told me, all the way to the top. Failure to discipline, management must track all training, certification, and deployments to ensure you don't have misbehavior handler or dog. So, they're pretty much auditing us all the time, to making sure we're doing everything correct, the dog's getting trained, we're getting trained, we're not doing anything stupid. So, cost, you got a couple different things. Purchase K-9, K-9 equipment, vet, um, the wages. There's a FALA, that's federal law, I'll go over that in a bit. So, usually, a cost of a K-9 is around, dual purpose is about eleven thousand five hundred dollars, and that's trained, ready to go, um, lab, spaniels, they're about seventy-seven hundred, it's all depending, it's approximately, these aren't exact figures. Uh, for a patrol K-9 course and the narcotic detection K-9 course, those are about two, three weeks apart, sometimes longer depending on where you go. When I did my initial one, I did eight weeks for narcotics at the Utah Post and then eight weeks patrol. So, they're pretty long. Um, so, I went to Town and Country, just to help, just to get an estimate on how much it would cost for medical, the vet, and it's about nine hundred and forty-six dollars a year, but you got, some of them are three-year boosters, one every year, so it's not an annual thing. Uh, Mini Pet Mart said they'd already donate the dog food, which is about sixty dollars a month per dog. They're huge supporters of dogs, obviously, it's Pet Mart. Um, K-9 equipment, these are usually all one-time purchases, except, um, the bite suit and bite sleeve, those are just, once they start getting holes in them and terrors, you don't wanna use them anymore, cause if they got holes in, dog's teeth gets in it and rip out the dog's teeth, that's just a nightmare. Um, those are all one-time purchases, though. You got, uh, the vehicle K-9 insert, that is for one vehicle and that includes to get, um, take out the back of it and then you get a two-thirds kennel, so you still can transport your bad guy and still have the dog in there safely. And there's a hot and pop, which will, if you need to, it'll automatically release the car door open if we need it, or controls the temperature in there for the safety of the K-9 also. If it gets too hot, it'll turn it on, kick it on, roll down the windows, et cetera. Um, approximately thirty-six thousand dollars to start up the unit and that includes the dog and the training and all that, all the equipment. Um, I contacted some of my people when I was down in Las Vegas and we got dog food already covered. The hot and pops are, uh, already donated, medical bags for the K-9 and bulletproof sap, proof vest. So, annual cost for the K-9 unit approximately is ten thousand dollars and that's just an estimate, could be less. Um, that's including salary, overtime. And this is the biggest thing about K-9 units, this is the Fair Labor Standards Act. This, um, you have to compensate for the bathing, brushing the dog, the handler, for having the dog at home or whatever. So, my old agency, it goes however the sheriff and the command wants it done, but in my old agency, instead of getting a half hour every day of overtime, we just, um, either before shift or after shift, we got an hour for the four days. Um, that'd be our cleaning the dog, take care of the dog, do all the maintenance with the dog. So, that just all depends, but this is a must, it's federal law, it has to be implemented. So, I think that's... Yeah. And then, just where I got the information.
So, real, real quick on the, uh, the Fair Labor Standards Act, that came up, it was a, a Garcia law or act that, that occurred and what happened was, there was an agency that had a K-9 program that was working for years and there was never compensation for the handler for the off time and that dog went home with the handler on the off time. So then the handler came back on that agency and said, "Well, I need to get paid for this." And ended up winning a lawsuit saying, "Hey, uh, I need to get paid for all my spare time that I use with this dog, because it's your dog, it's not my dog." So, what, what this did was, uh, the government stepped in and said, "Yes, that's true." So, the agency has to come up with some sort of compensation, whether it be, uh, overtime pay or, uh, shift differential or something to cover that. Um, and when we had talked with the sheriff, basically, um, as you get promoted through our agency, like a detective or somebody else, you'll get a five percent increase or whatever, that also would cover that. So, that would make it safe for the county and for the sheriff to know that, "Hey, this handler can't come back on us in five years and say, 'I've been working this dog for five years and no one's been paying me for it.'" Because that, whatever the stipend is that's agreed upon by the agency and the handler is set in stone and then that covers you from any liability, as far as that goes.
Okay.
Um, and Brad, he's, he's up to speed on, um, all the current legislation and how to run everything and, um, you wanna?
Sure. So, good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Uh, for those of you that don't know me, my name's Brad Alcorn. Um, I am a Creek County resident now and glad to be here.
Budget Committee member?
Absolutely. Uh, I am a retired police officer and I did spend approximately thirty-five years with the Fresno Police Department. And during those thirty-five years, I had, uh, the pleasure of having a wide variety of assignments. Um, I worked patrol, I worked, uh, uh, almost fifteen years on our special weapons and tactical team. Um, I worked our violent crime suppression unit, I worked the various assignments and investigations ranging from sexual assault, robbery, spent eight years in homicide, I worked on our career criminal team, I worked on multiple, uh, federal task forces, uh, I worked major narcotics. Um, and I wrote wiretaps, I've done a tremendous amount of large-scale investigations and, um, including police corruption. With that being said, one of the assignments that I had in my career was to start a K-9 program at Fresno PD. The chief selected myself and another officer, just like these two young men, and, uh, and we started our program. We started with eight dogs. And back then, when we started our program, they were single-purpose dogs, they were protection dogs, because our city and our agency had a need to protect our officers and our community. We had a, we had a surge in violent crime and we needed those tools out there. And so, we started with eight dogs. And, um, I worked my dog successfully until his, he could no longer work and his service life was over, I moved on in my career. But I, I stayed in touch with our program and today, our program is extremely successful, it's doubled in size. Uh, most of our dogs were dual-purpose dogs. They were either explosive dogs and protection dogs, or they were protection dogs and narcotics dogs. One of the things about our program that's important to note, as I look at alternative funding solutions here, is asset seizures. Our major narcotics unit has a dog assigned to them specifically to aid in asset seizures. They do package interdiction, they do road interdiction, and, um, they assist in, in all of their major narcotics investigations by locating not just the drugs, but the residue from drugs that's left on money. Package interdiction, for instance, the way that works is, the sheriff forms a relationship with FedEx, UPS, post office, and, uh, even the Coast Guard. And, uh, through that relationship, he's allowed access to packages. And the handlers are trained to identify certain characteristics of a package that might be consistent with a drug dealer transporting money or drugs. Those packages are set aside, the dog runs the packages, the dog alerts on the package, a search warrant's written, the investigation begins. It's not uncommon to find twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five thousand dollars in a package that's being sent UPS or FedEx. And it's drug trafficking money and it's taken through asset seizure, uh, uh, protocol. So, I also wanna point out that from Humboldt County to Coos County, there's no drug dogs. Nobody working interdictions. And I think this is a tremendous opportunity. We have two guys that are very experienced and, uh, we have a sheriff that's trying to do everything he can with what he's got to, to police our county. And we have an opportunity here to, to create a program that could not only self-fund itself, but could also provide additional resources to be used for other training and other equipment in the agency. Um, I'm more than willing to volunteer, uh, my experience, my training, my services to the Sheriff's Office and help with, you know, anything the sheriff needs to get this program, um, up and going. Um, and I just would really encourage you to strongly consider, uh, this opportunity. I think it will be extremely beneficial, not only from a funding perspective, but also if we can make an impact through these dogs and drying up some of the narcotics resources in this community, those people are gonna move on. And they're gonna go where the drugs are readily available and easy to get. And I know in South County, in the harbor area, I went on a ride along with a couple of these guys and, uh, there, there are drug addicts out there, it's, it's evolving, there's an evolution taking place and I can see it. And, um, now's a great opportunity to, to, to step in and be proactive rather than reactive when it gets out of control.
Anyone that thinks that crime and, and drugs in this county aren't going to continue to, to get worse, I think, um, is not seeing through clear eyes. I have a couple of questions, though. Firstly, I'd like to compliment the deputies on their apparent, um, on the presentation firstly, but also their commitment to this program. You, you both seem like you're extremely committed to the program and with your histories, that gives me confidence in this. Um, one question I had on this, is there any additional insurance, um, bridges that we have to meet on this through, you know, for liability for the county or through the Sheriff's Department? Do we know about?
So, I don't believe that there's any additional liability insurances. Um, however, speaking to the issue of liability, um, to minimize liability, um, it starts with number one, transparency, number two, extreme oversight, and number three, developing a department policy that is extremely restrictive. In other words, there's a policy in place where these deputies understand there are circumstances that you don't deploy your... In other words, there's a policy in place where these deputies understand there are circumstances that you don't deploy your dog. And it's, it's black and white. There, there's, there's no discretion involved in some of those decisions. And then, um, the maintenance of your training records and the quality of the training that you're doing on a weekly basis, the scenario-based training that you're doing and putting in and, and, and the evolution of that, of course. And putting and implementing those things in place with that oversight is, uh, going to minimize liability. I can tell you from my own experience in handling a dog, number one, the dog saved my life more than once. Um, number two, the dog prevented me from using deadly force multiple times. So it saved the lives of those being apprehended. Um, one of the things not touched on here yet is, uh, another purpose that these dogs can serve. Um, when we have a lost or missing person in our community, those dogs are a valuable tool, a valuable resource for that. They don't just go, go find people and bite them. They find people. They search for human scent in a geographical area and they lead the handler to those people. And that's a, that's a valuable resource to have here. And I think this program, it's, the dog is a force multiplier, whether it's a protection dog, a narcotics dog, or a search and rescue dog.
Commissioner Gold?
I just have two questions. If you were to, um, find some money or whatever, what, where does that go?
What's the process?
Yeah, what's the process?
So, uh, and I've talked to our district attorney about this. So the DA, the district attorney's office becomes involved and there's a legal process that you go through to actually seize that money. It's part of a, uh, part of the actual prosecution, if you will, um, that, uh, the DA becomes involved in. And I've talked to him about that and, uh, his response was, "Right now, we don't have any big cases going on like that. We haven't had any." And part of the reason we haven't is we don't have a program like this in place.
So we don't know what would happen to that money at this point?
Well, it would, it would get booked into evidence and then, uh, once the, once it was adjudicated and, uh, a, a judge, uh, allowed the seizure of the money, uh, then it would be put into a fund designated by the county.
Okay. And I guess it could help pay for this program, I would assume?
It would pay for, it would pay for training and equipment.
Yeah. And then I have one other question. Um, if we were to put this program in, uh, is that part of the budget at this point?
Uh, I, I think the sheriff would have to, to speak on that.
Captain McDonald, Sheriff's Office. Um, we have in our budget proposal, we've had, we have asked for, um, a pay differential for two canine officers that's in there. Um, on the, I'm going to back up for just a second. On the asset forfeiture stuff, there is a whole process. It's changed numerous times in the state of Oregon. But right now, let's just say we seize a hundred thousand dollars cash, we don't get all of that. There's a formula that it gets dispersed. Part of it goes to different places throughout the state, but the county does keep a portion of it. So, um, if it's, depending on how it seized is what the, what the actual net is to the county. Um, and then, um, Commissioner Pash, um, your question on the, on the liability, they hit on liabilities in their presentation and just, just as a clarifier on that, those are liabilities that we currently already have. Um, each one of these deputies, when we put them out there, um, the county has the vicarious liability of we have these law enforcement officers out there. Um, we give them guns. We give them tasers. We give them pepper spray. We give them batons. We give them cars. Um, cars are deadly force. Their firearms are deadly force. Their tasers, their batons, their pepper spray, their beanbag shotguns, those are all less than lethal. Well, the dog is classified as less than lethal. And when we hand them a firearm, we give them the knowledge and the tools to use it and we give them the training on when to use it and when not to use it. And so it's no different with a dog, only most of the time, dogs are the scariest non-lethal force you're going to run into. I mean, so it's, it's liabilities that the sheriff's office already currently has. We already have, which with each deputy that we put out in the field, we already carry those liabilities and those, and they, they carry those responsibilities. We're just giving them another tool and another tool that can be used as a whole for our community, so.
Thank you.
If I may just add, uh, a couple more things to kind of illustrate the potential of, uh, asset seizures. Um, in my research of canines being used in Oregon and specifically this area, uh, we reached out to, uh, Medford, the Medford area. They have the MAGE unit, which is the drug and gang unit. Um, there's one dog there, one, one team, if you will, um, that was, uh, responsible and involved in three-point-one million dollars in asset seizure and cash. So that's an example of, you know, that's Medford. It's a different geographical area, but it's an example. There's also some grant funding for, uh, methamphetamine-related programs. I think the state, I saw the state had four-hundred thousand dollars. I think it was Jackson County that got thirty-five, thirty-six thousand in a, in a grant for, to, to aid them in that. So by implementing this program, some of those things may become available.
During, during the NACO meetings I was just at as well, they were talking about some grant funding for opioids as well that are going to be coming out later in the year.
Mm-hmm. And, uh, I think you probably read the, uh, the newspaper article of the, uh, interdiction by the Coast Guard off the boat on the northern coast of Oregon, which was a hundred and sixty-some pounds of liquid methamphetamine. Um, if there's an interdiction on I-5 in Medford and I'm a drug dealer, am I going to run my drugs through that interdiction point or am I going to run them down one-on-one?
Amen to that. Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm going to give a report later on the commissioner comments. I had the opportunity, privilege of spending time with, uh, US Attorney Billy Williams. And the sheriff mentioned just a minute ago about, uh, multiple discoveries and arrests and how that was just kind of a small part of what law enforcement is up against. And if I could repeat anything that, uh, US Attorney Williams mentioned is there is hardest are working on opioid and, uh, the whole marijuana and black market issue, uh, they're scratching the surface. And so his, his last comment in an hour and a half was basically, "Do anything, everything you can to support the local..." He didn't use the word or the term crime fighters, but that's what he meant. And you can start at the DA or the sheriff, either one, but both. And he just really gave that strong support and encouragement. One quick question. You mentioned, uh, Humboldt, Coos County. So that basically you mean, uh, Delnar County and Curry County don't have canine units?
No.
Okay, and that, it just seems like-
Not that are, not that are working specifically drugs.
Okay. And so that's an investment. It, it's an absolute investment, I think, best way to look at it and characterize it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Like I've said many, many times, um, anyone that doesn't think that, uh, that the drug dealers don't know that we don't have someone on that border, we don't have deputies twenty-four hours a day here. They know the hours that your, your men are not on duty. They know that we don't have dogs. And I have, um, always and always will, uh, value anything that will not only help protect the citizens of this county more, but enhance your abilities to protect your deputies and yourself. So, um, as far as I'm concerned, I'd like to move this forward quickly, uh, to, um, to bring this to, uh, to a vote here in the next, uh, in the next BOC meeting.
I have some questions.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I just have a few questions for you. So...
To me or?
Uh, to the group.
Okay.
So, you know, we're not, we don't really have a good track record for retaining employees very long. So what happens after we invest the money into training that individual and the dog? And, um, the employee moves on, let's say, a year later, do we have to reinvest in all that training again? And do we get to keep the dog or does the dog go with the trainer?
We buy the dog.
Okay.
Curry County will own the dog. The one thing good about like with Dave Verschel's dog, he's buying that dog for himself back from what he, it was, it was a search and rescue dog, which can be cross-trained in for narcotics very easily. He's going to give us that dog. Basically, it's going to belong to him, but we're going to be able to use that dog and save us a bunch of money right off the bat. Um, so that was just, uh, that's what we talked about.
Right, yeah. I would just basically use the dog.
I wanted to clarify again on asset forfeitures. Uh, you know, when Brad talked, said he talked to the DA and the DA says, "We don't have the resources" or whatever. We don't have any of those cases. But we are part of SINT, South Coast Interagency Narcotics Team. And through them, they have the resources to do the asset forfeitures. They have their district attorney. They have a person that really works on all that. And any money, and I've, I've talked to, uh, the person who was in charge of that, who's actually moving back into, as a patrol captain. They're trying to keep that, um, SINT viable. That's why I've asked Julie to look at, uh, some funding that the county can put forward with that, maybe from the state marijuana monies or whatever, but just enough for us, the county, to stay involved with SINT. And I, when I was talking to the guy that was in charge of that, he says, "When we do mostly asset forfeitures, that money, most of the money should come back to the county." Uh, they'll be part of that. If they do the asset forfeiture, they do the work on, of course, they're going to have part of that. But let me give you an example. Uh, I, I think it was maybe six, seven years ago, we did a seizure of what he was talking about. Uh, it came through UPS. A dog hit on the package. It was ninety thousand dollars in one package. A week later, another package showed up, ninety thousand dollars. So all that money was seized, um, by SINT. But I don't know that our county got much out of that. But, you know, if we're involved within our dogs and we use them to come down and help us, I would, I would assume that we would get a, a pretty good chunk of that asset forfeiture. Thank you. Julie had another question?
I just want to comment on the, the funding of it. So as Sheriff mentioned, we're working on a grant for the SINT, um, membership or the fee. Allcare is working with us on a grant on that one. And when the state did say that counties would give a portion of that marijuana money, a portion of it is supposed to be going to law enforcement. In our county, we're just putting it in the general fund. So this is a way to help, um, fulfill that commitment or at, at least the intention of where that money was supposed to go. And then lastly, um, there was a home in the county that was, um, I believe it was seized by law enforcement or somehow, um, in looking at the property list of the nine-hundred properties the county has, we do have one that it was said that when that property is sold, the proceeds shall go to the sheriff's department. So I think now is probably a really good time for us to look at that property, get it marketed, get it sold to help fund this program.
And another thing, uh, for the public out there that might view this, uh, this is another reason to approve the TLT tax because a good portion of that money will also go to the sheriff's department to help fund these kind of, of efforts to protect the public in this county. Did you have something else, Commissioner Boyce?
Good reminder on that. Very good. Um, whoa, where was that going? Oh, on, go back a couple of slides if we could, just maybe one minute, maybe two, Mr. Chair. Uh, toward it talks about, uh, the potential lawsuits for the, the, the trainer of the dog. Uh, I just want to be able to tell the citizens that, um, this is a bargain and this is not somebody just getting overtime pay, uh, for taking care of their dog. I mean, that's, you know how taxpayers are and to the extent that could be even partially liable, uh, just clarify that maybe so that we have a, a good, reliable talking point to explain.
When it, when it comes to doing the job of, uh, being a canine handler, I can tell you that in my thirty-five years, that was the most demanding job that I had physically. It was more so than the SWAT job. Um, that dog is, for, for the dog to work well with you, there has to be a bond. So you've got to spend a tremendous amount of time with the animal. You, you and the animal have to become almost one, if you will. And that doesn't happen by throwing the dog in a kennel and, you know, going and doing your personal business. You spend a tremendous amount of time with the dog. The dog, while it doesn't necessarily require a lot of care, the handlers are going to put in a tremendous amount of care with the dog. And every handler that I've ever been around has always gone above and beyond whatever is necessary to train the dog. So you do obedience at your mandatory training, but I did hours of obedience every day with my dog because I made a commitment, like I'm sure these two, you can see the commitment in their eyes. Uh, I made a commitment to do that and they're going to do that. The, the, the time that they're going to spend in this dog is an amazing amount of time. And then the, the mandatory training that, that goes on is weekly. And it's, it's a documented weekly training where they have to meet certain standards each week.
Very helpful. Thank you.
I've actually owned one of these back in the late eighties. I owned a retired one and they were, they were amazing animals.
My personal dog right now is a Belgian Malinois. I had it a puppy and trained myself.
Commissioner Boyce, also, when it comes to, um, the lawsuits and the if, it's no different between a dog handler and a regular deputy. Um, if, if we have negligent retention on a deputy, if we have a deputy that's always getting used to force complaints and we don't do the proper discipline and we don't do the things that we, that we're supposed to do as managers and supervisors, we have an inherent, we, we put the county in an inherent liability situation. It's the same thing with a dog. If the, if we're not paying attention to our handlers and they're not doing what they're supposed to do and they're not doing the documentation and we're not ensuring that they do the things that they do, then we again put the county into a, into a situation of liability. So it's our jobs to ensure that they do their jobs and it's their job to ensure that they do theirs also. So it doesn't change the, the liabilities that we have. It just means that that's another thing that we have to make sure that our guys are doing what they're supposed to do. And that's, and so that's why we have myself and the sheriff and our sergeants and, and, um, so that's what we do every day anyway. So it just, it's, uh, it adds another tool in our toolbox and it's a big tool, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
So we want to bring this back as an action item?
We can. Um, Council, would this come back as an order approving a program or how would we do that?
I got the sense that it's going to be presented at the budget and that you've got it worked into the budget and that this is just kind of a, a precursor. I mean, how, how long does it take to actually get a dog? I mean, what I saw in the materials was this was going to be kind of a, an, there was a estimated funding amount that would be needed. Some's coming from donations, but you're having it in your budget. Uh, what, what's your plan, Sheriff?
That's correct. We're going to have a canine program. This was as a presentation to make you guys aware and support it. Uh, we're going to try to do the best we can for outside funding, you know, donations and things like that. And like I said, uh, we haven't even advertised this yet and we've already got about a thousand dollar worth of donations, just boom, coming in. Um, but I wanted to make the presentation and then I want to make, go public. This is what the sheriff's office is going to do. I want the drug dealers and the people who use, um, meth and other illicit drugs that give them to children. I want them to be on notice. We're, we're, we're going to put a bite in it, uh, so to speak.
Literally.
But, um, other na, yeah, there may be some, uh, additional monies that we may have to ask for from the budget committee. But like, you know, we said, we're, we have budgeted in for the, uh, a five percent increase for working out of classification as a canine deputy to, to of the handlers. They've been working hard already. They've been making contacts. They've gotten donations for, you know, the food. The food bill alone is going to be incredible because it's all going to be donated. Uh, medical kits, uh, it's already been donated, uh, some other things, you know, the hotspot and the cars, I think that's going to be donated. Hot pops. Um, it's incredible. I know Julie put it out on social media one time because of, there was a picture of a gal that, that committed some crimes that was on methamphetamine and she said, "Would you support a canine program in Curry County?" And boom, uh, it just went kind of viral and there wasn't one person who said no. They all said absolutely. This is something that's needed. So in order to fund this, you know, to get it going, I'm, I'm not saying on July one, you know, we're going to get, if the budget passes, we're going to have a canine program. It's going to take a little bit of time to get the dogs here, trained and, uh, all our policies in place. So it, it just takes a little time. I just need to know I have support from the commissioners in county for, to do this. It's, you know, the DA is going to have to be, play a big part in this as well. So we'll have to get him up to speed on, you know, about asset forfeitures and things like that. But we already have something in place. As I said, begin with, when we did have a canine program, it wasn't overseen properly and, and Brad hit on that. That's why it must be done properly from the start. Because the oversight on it was, they weren't getting their, or the, they weren't following the Fair Labor Standards Act. The handlers came back and said, "Hey, I want to do this." Well, the sheriff at that time says, "Fine." They had to pay him back all this stuff, but he took the canine program out. We don't want to see that happen. We want to make sure it's running right from the start.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, would we want to consider voter support today?
Sure. If we'd like to have a voter support, just an oral voter support.
This is good news. I'll happily make that motion, Mr. Chair. Support the canine program for, uh, the Curry County Sheriff's. Support the canine program for the Curry County Sheriff's Office.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
Call for the roll?
Mr. Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Aye.
Chair Pash?
Strongly aye.
Voting carried unanimously.
We're gonna have to because of union rules, we have to take a ten-minute recess.
It's actually this stuff.
Jack?
I think we thought that we started at ten. So they've already done your presentation.
Yours is the next big idea and you need the right place to fine tune it, build it.
We have these parks which are set up to protect and preserve biodiversity. That's challenging under any circumstances. But it certainly is almost impossible if you don't know what the actual biodiversity is in your park or the area that you're trying to conserve is.
BioBlitz is a celebration of biodiversity. Biodiversity is the variety of life in an area. We don't know how much life and what types of life are here at Crater Lake National Park. The big obvious things we know about. But a BioBlitz is where we go out and look for a particular type of organism. This year, we're looking for beetles or the order Coleoptera.
The wealth of biodiversity that are in these parks, ninety-nine percent of it is something that could fit in your hand.
We can't save what we don't know exists. So if there's a beetle species out there that's very important and we don't know about it, we can't do anything to help it. That is the ultimate goal of the BioBlitz. It's a way that citizens can come here. We have volunteers that are here who are actually giving this information, they're using their time to help the scientists build a greater picture of what kind of beetles are here in this park.
Getting this sort of baseline data of what biodiversity is there, not only shows us what's there, which is just intrinsically interesting for its own purpose, but it also begins to set a baseline. And that baseline data set is what we then can use, and not just scientists, but the general public and those land managers, the, the stakeholders in that BioBlitz, can use those observations then on into the future to understand if things are changing.
It's not so much about counting number of species, it's more about seeing a fuller picture of the biodiversity. And the biodiversity is the variety of different types of organisms, different types of species.
I do believe that in their past BioBlitzes, that they have expanded the number of things they now had recorded from the park, but also confirmed that some of the things that were reported historically are still present. So even if it's not a new discovery for the park, it still creates another piece of data that tells us, yes, that thing still lives here and is still thriving or, or maybe struggling, but, but we begin to learn something about it. I think that has an intrinsic value to the park for its long-term future, but it also just has an intrinsic social value. When you ask questions about why do we have these parks, and there's lots of ways to answer that question, but one of them is that the parks are these areas where we, where we go to appreciate the wildlife there. And this is a way of tapping into some of that wildlife at all sorts of different levels. One of the key things besides the biology that's involved in these BioBlitzes is the interaction with the public and the opportunity to educate the public about the biodiversity around them.
The citizen scientists are here working alongside professional scientists. And that allows them not just to connect with science here at the park, but connect with the greater scientific community. It's, it's a real positive thing. We see all ages coming here and, and they're just acting like kids out searching for bugs, but they're doing real science at the same time. It's a great connection between this amazing resource and the people that live around it.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are and I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs. And it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire. So we just thought that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower forty-eight states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the national forest down to the protected ocean, and it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was though, until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded, we're unspoiled and we're a little difficult to get to, but my God, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go, we just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm gonna be honest, when the Rural Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally. And I'm pleasantly surprised, it's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's gonna benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves and I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas. Outdoor recreation, food and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships.
In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all gets shipped away. And so now we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Eat Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events, bringing together the area growers with the area vendors so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants, and we have a new local food co-op.
We created a farm trail from Bannon to Port Orford. We did nine U-Pick farms and it just gained traction and people loved it.
Langloes is less than five hundred people, it's very small. So we have to bring in tourists. And being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really want to make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began Dragonfly Farm just three years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, oh my gosh, why wouldn't you do this? I just quit my, my day job and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I want to do for the rest of my life and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're gonna send people now and we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive. We're patting ourselves on the back. I don't know anybody else is, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help. So we came up with a mountain bike plan and we also worked on designating a state scenic bikeway. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area. So we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station. So now people that want to come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the Rural Tourism Studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small. And now we've grown to about five or six guides and we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Fuzz Bay.
Overall, tourism is on the rise here. We've had a bang last two years and it's like a breath of fresh air down here.
My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have and it's a balance. We're gonna promote tourism, but we want to do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area has been so successful since the Tourism Studio is the people that are involved. We have a lot of great, motivated, smart people who understand the need to promote tourism in the right way and it's really all about the people.
When you live in a room...
Can't spend any tax money on a...
How much do they cost? Hundred bucks?
I can't imagine that much, but I just know we can't spend money on it.
I can, right?
You could.
Could a private individual do it?
That's how Dan got the levy passed and Josephine took his own money and did it.
Take some donations, I support the TLT. All right.
Was there? I'll have to look at that. This past week?
Are you, are you the new guy?
Boyd Allen.
Uh-oh. It's not, what's his name? Let me, let me do it that way. Okay. All right, we are back in section and session at ten twenty-one AM.
Five A.
Yes, we're going to five A with Ms. Julie Swift, who has now dawned us with her presence.
Julie Swift, payroll and HR. What I sent you were personnel action forms of people that have been hired over the last few months. It's part of the personnel rules since when we had the administrator and they could sign off on the, on the paths and didn't have to come before the board. So this is just notifying you, people that have been hired and people that are new to the county. Now that we don't have the administrator anymore, all those actions will come before the board, so I don't have to do this anymore.
There you go.
I just wanted to make one other comment. You removed the Parks Director job description from the agenda today and I just want to let you know, previously the description was Parks Director slash Community Service Coordinator and with the split of Juvenile and Parks, all that job description is doing is taking the Community Service Coordinator piece out of it. So it's just making it the Parks Director.
I have a question for you because it was, don't I recall it was under Community Development previous to being tied in with Juvenile? Wasn't the Parks Director's job and shouldn't that be probably more into Community Development Department? Seems we're on that topic.
It was, well, it was always with Juvenile because Juvenile, the Parks piece had the Community Service piece too at also for the juveniles assigned to that. And when, that was kind of Jay Trost's baby and when he left, Juvenile just really didn't want to deal with Parks anymore.
Yeah, I actually talked to Jay about that yesterday or a couple days ago, but you know, I think Parks with, were promoting tourism and all that, I think that is probably a better place would be under Community Development, Economic Development, kind of a, an area to look at.
So we, we did discuss that when I first came on board this year about which departments should basically fall under Community Development. And at that time, there was some discussion about putting Parks under Community Development, but the Josh Hopkins, the Director or Coordinator, did not want to come under Community Development at that time, so when we did the org chart, he was left out of it at that time.
So he's kind of, he's standalone right now?
I'd like to maybe look to bring it back under that.
I would agree.
Anyway, so if you don't have any questions on any of those personnel action forms, my work here is done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Were your ears ringing?
Yeah. Josh Hopkins.
Hi, Josh.
Curry County Parks Director. We've gone down the route previously of possibly looking at moving it back over to Community Development. Not necessarily something the Parks is really interested in at this time. It's one of those things, I've never heard any real benefit to that. We're kind of operating okay. And Ms. Melzer is the Parks Supervisor over as Director of County Operations, so she is still available to you. So just keep that in mind.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, five C, Mr. Christensen, Roadmaster Report.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, Board of Commissioners, Richard Christensen, Curry County Road Department. And we're here today on vacating an unused right-of-way up in the Floris Lake area, Pacific City. And we have seventy-five percent of the budding landowners to and on developed piece of property right-of-way that this county has that has no plans of ever doing anything with, that we would like to vacate back to the adjoining property owners.
County Council, have you looked into this as well? And I mean, as, if we were to do that, is this a clean transaction? No reciprocity going back? Can anyone step in on the county to? I know sometimes when counties, when properties are, I, I've purchased properties off the courtroom steps and they have a, a time period that they can come back and re, retake that property.
Sure. This is a little bit different than that. This is a vacation application. So in other words, there is on paper a county, I think this might be an alley or a, or a road, and essentially it's not being used by the county. That's the long and the short of the Roadmaster's report. The process here is a property owner, a budding, the piece of right-of-way that they want vacated submits an application. It goes to the Board of Commissioners to direct the Roadmaster to bring back a report to see if this piece of right-of-way is needed for any county purpose. The Roadmaster has looked at it, it's really not needed for that purpose. So the Roadmaster is giving you the report, there's no need for this. And then to answer your question about people pushing back on this, we have a public hearing scheduled for, I think, May twenty-second, that'll be the next step. So this is an intermediate step in the vacation of right-of-way procedure and the next action will be May twenty-second. So now the Roadmaster's report is in the record and then the hearing will be May twenty-second. People can argue about that, they can argue about the necessity of this, but it's, it's, there will be no redemption period for someone to take this back. Right. And that, that is in a tax foreclosure sale. Those, those are the kind of things that Director of Operations is kind of working on currently with me and the assessors. That will be a different process, so.
And, and Roadmaster, just so the record is clear, you've, you've looked into this matter and I just want to make sure that there is no benefit to anyone, you're not related to anyone on this property, those kind of things that you could, somebody could make gain from your decision.
That's correct.
Okay.
There's no relation here to anybody I know.
Okay.
And on the AGRS is my report, my complete report.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Just clarification, Council Huddle on the May twenty-second, is that just gonna be on this Norman Bulldog applicant? No other properties? And I'll tell you why I'm asking that, it is just one.
Right, so what, what happens is the certain people within, I think, two hundred feet, I'd have to check the exact statute, but the notice goes out to these people who could be affected by the vacation of that right-of-way to say whether or not they have an interest that needs to be protected and whether they oppose it or not. And so it's just a hearing for people in the area of this vacation to come and tell the commissioners, one, one property.
Okay, so the reason I ask that, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Sure.
I've had three different residents contact... I've had three different residents contact me coincidentally about purchasing county property. One is at Flores, Flores Lake, one is at Hunter's Creek, and one is, I don't remember the address, somewhere in Harbor. So I'd like to, when all else fails, call a workshop, right? But give them an opportunity to come here and present to the board. Maybe even, I think all three of them are able to make offers and work with the assessors. And so what would be the right approach there? To, to give them a chance to present to the board and the public?
Well, I'd like to use time well spent. So if we can do a workshop and have everything on the same topic would be great, if that's possible.
Well, I think what we've been doing is we've been having them start with, with my position. And then seeing, does it, you know, does it have to go to a sheriff's sale? Is it something that we can sell? I mean, there's a, you have to look at the value of them and there's some, how the property was acquired. And then we take it from there. And if it's one that goes to the board, we bring it to the board.
So I'll delay the request for workshop and I will get them in touch with Director of Operations?
And then if we can get that work done in time, that we could add them to that, I see no problem.
Might generate some other interest in other properties. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Christensen.
All right. So we are going to... Just quickly, over the consent agenda, we're looking to approve the minutes from March 27th, April 3rd, April 9th, business meetings and on the 27th workshop appointments to reappoint members to the Cus-Curry Douglas Board. We've moved 8B on the consent agenda to 8C as an action item. We have removed the liaison. We've got a, on C, we've got job descriptions, the Veteran's Service Officer and his additional duties. We have an order adopting a Veteran's Service Officer job description and reclassifying the Veteran's Service Officer. We've got the Parks Director and C and D have been removed from the consent agenda. And we have higher orders from the Assessor's Office, the Road Department, actually, the Assessor's Office, Cindy Ashby, Road Department Ray Burkey, and Road Department Laura Lee Snook. Have a motion, please?
I move we approve the consent agenda as amended.
I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any further comments? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, we're a little early for the public hearings. Imagine that, we're running early.
Made your day, huh?
Yeah. Ms. Colstrom, if you are watching the live feed, maybe you could come in?
If I could, Mr.
He'll have to come back.
Right. Because we've noticed a particular time. I think if you got the Roadmaster here, you could probably get him in and out of here and.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Let's take action item A. And that would be the chip and seal oil bid?
Good morning again, Board of Commissioners, Richard Christensen, Curry County Road Department. Yes, we're looking for, for you to approve, given Roadmaster signature authority to purchase $382,000 worth of chip seal oil. This oil is for the work we were able to complete last summer. We're going to complete it in June, plus the oil we're buying for our next fiscal year projects. We're buying everything ahead of time, so we don't run into problems like we had last year where we couldn't purchase our resources.
Commissioner Gold?
Is it cheaper in volume when you do it all in one bid?
No, I don't think so. It's, it's the price is the price.
Just the convenience to have it there.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyce?
How do you store that? And I assume it's a 50-gallon drums? You know, that's.
No, no. This is thousands and thousands of gallons of oil.
Oh, my God.
And so it's trucked over daily for the amount that we need that day and we utilize it.
So you don't even have to store it then?
No. If we have to store it, that means that some part of our operation malfunctioned, like a piece of equipment. We weren't unable to complete that project that day. At that point, we either have to store it, which we don't have the capability right now, or we have to ship it back, which would happen to be like $500 in shipping fees. So it's really important that our program runs smooth.
So you're tying it up for a indefinite period of time?
Correct.
Okay.
So we're going to be tied up for about seven weeks this year.
So it's like buying fuel on the futures market where you pay for the fuel now and then they, they bring it as you need it?
We lock it in now.
That's what I mean.
And, but there's, in the contract, there's language that the price could be adjusted per.
Really?
The rate, yes.
So what's the benefit then to lock, to buy it in bulk if they're, if they're not going to guarantee the price? That would be the benefit to them to lock it in at a price?
Is the lock in the resource. There, this resource is utilized by all 34 of our sister counties and cities. And so, and there's like four different purveyors.
So this would stop the county from having a shortage of oil then if it was all bought up?
We, it would make sure that our project would go as scheduled.
Is there at least a, a sliding scale of a variable of how much they can raise or I'm sure lower the price?
I'm not sure. I'll have to get back to you how that works.
Okay. Do we need a, a motion on this?
I would think so. It's an action item.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
I move that we approve the chip and seal oil bid and that we give signature authority to Roadmaster Christensen.
I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Further comments? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Aye.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Seems you're standing there. Let's talk about the Gardner Ridge Emergency Stabilization.
Yes, the recent storm event we had April 5th through the 8th, we, we sustained major road damage all over the county, but this is our worst event. And when we arrived on site, we had already lost half our road. And we were able to hire a local contractor that I've worked with in the past with Brookings. I knew all the local contractors, that they were able to come in, emergency with equipment and materials to stabilize that slide to not lose the entire road. So we were able, for $24,000 and change, McLennan Contractors rip-wrapped the bank, installed 240 feet of storm drainage pipe and realigned the road so to allow for logging traffic and local traffic to get by this slide. It's a one-lane road right now with traffic control where people could access. So without this work being done in the time that we did it, we could have lost the whole road and logging activity would have stopped. And also, local people living down there wouldn't, would have been isolated with no alternate route. So it was a real successful project and I feel that the contractor was very efficient and effective and we have a really good price for saving that road.
And are they going to get it back to a two-lane road here in the near future?
We're going to be working on that and looking for funding. It's that road to repair, we estimated will cost $300,000 to $400,000 to put in a retaining wall system. And so we're going to look for funding. So I'm prepared to let that be a one-lane closure due to the low traffic counts for maybe a year or two and try to find money where we could do, pay 10.27% of the repair. So if it's a $400,000 project, we'll be paying $50,000 instead of the 400. So I'm going to try to do that and we'll see how long it takes. But if it, if we have to, we will have to use the road funds to repair that road.
So you, you mentioned that you have a traffic control there. What, what type of control? Because if it's going to be out for that long where it goes to one lane, of course, you're going to have, you have traffic going either direction. What is the traffic control?
Traffic control will be where the slide area is protected from vehicles going in there. And there'll be a stop sign on either side. They'll say, wait for oncoming traffic. So people could see each other and if someone coming, just stay where you're at. Once they're through, then you can proceed.
Perfect. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We have a motion?
I move that we approve the Gardner Ridge Road Emergency Stabilization.
Second?
I'll second.
Any further comments? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right. So seems we've still got plenty of time. Council?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At the previous action item, you asked the Roadmaster if we were getting a lock-in price and he said he thought there was some ability to adjust. But I reviewed the documents and I had reviewed the documents before they went to the board and I didn't remember any adjustment options in the contract and I still don't see any. So I know, you know, you put the Roadmaster on the spot, asking that question. I mean, not by any means to put him on the spot, as it were, but essentially, I'm just not sure I agree with his analysis of the contract that they could adjust their prices if, if it went up. So I, I think we're good with the prices that you approved. And if.
So what you're saying is basically the language of the contract does not state that they can move the price?
I didn't see any language in there that said they did. And if they tried, I would try to persuade them otherwise based on the, based on the contract we have. So.
Very good.
Mr. Christensen?
Yeah, I'm just going by what my engineering department, they alluded to the fact that there was some room in there. And I'll find out how that works. It may not be in the contract.
Okay.
Not in the contract.
Well.
It's hard to enforce, put it that way.
Correct. And so I'll, I'll answer that and get it back to you on email.
Thank you, sir.
But we'll, we'll fight the good fight if things try to go off the tracks.
Perfect. Thank you. Counsel, Commissioner Gold?
Just knowing that prices of oil are going up right now, I think it's a good thing you're getting it in there.
Yeah. All right. Moving on, professional service contract. Ms. Melzer, Lost Creek Dam?
Yes, this is, we've discussed this before. This is a professional services contract with Steve Byerlin. His company is known as Oregon Strong LLC. And as you know, he's done some work for us on the Lost Creek Dam Rogue Fisheries recovery issue. The board had discussed a service contract for some work he had done in the past and this board made it very clear they did not want to pay for past services. So what happened was Josephine County agreed to pay the first $5,000 of all costs incurred, which takes care of previous encumbrances. And then this would be for the coming year, $5,000 to represent us from this point forward. What happens is Josephine County has agreed to pay that first $5,000. This would be Curry paying $5,000. And if Jackson County joins the effort, they would also pay $5,000. If that $15,000 gets exhausted, then we would have to come back with a new contract. So this is $5,000 to cover Curry County for up until April 17th of 2020.
And I have spoken with the Commissioners at, or the, the Board Chair at Jackson County. And he has relayed to me that Jackson has not made a decision to join the letter even yet, that they hope to get to it in the next week or two.
Right.
I'm sure.
I was going to say, so it doesn't, it also doesn't pay an hourly rate? I think there was some concern about how much time this would actually consume and how expensive it could get. So it's just a $5,000 flat rate for the year?
Commissioner Boyce?
Well, you're traveling to Jackson County with Mr. Byerlin. Byerlin, I'm sure.
Yes.
Didn't hurt. And I'd be very surprised if they didn't support this fully after the week time you mentioned there. Yeah, originally, you know, I had a little bit apprehension how we were approaching this and because he's been a lifelong friend of mine. And I feel very comfortable with this now. Public, I think, is getting a tremendous deal. The county has really potential long-term benefits on this. And so we'll just keep pursuing and following and encouraging Jackson County. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I would also like to say, I'd like to say thank you publicly to Josephine County, Lily Morgan, for being, getting in the, in the forefront of this and making that offer. I thought it was very bold of the Commissioners there to, to step forward and do this with the limited knowledge that they have, trusting this board and also Mr. Byerlin. One further comment on this is this hit the floor of the House yesterday. And I believe it was a 44 to 3 vote in favor.
55 to 3.
55 to 3, I'm sorry. In favor of moving this forward for the Senate. So this looks like the work that Mr. Byerlin has done along with our Representative David Brock Smith and, and the work that he's done to get this to the floor. I just applaud them both. And I believe that all three of our counties will not only see much work done to repair the tourism and fish losses that we have suffered through this county and other counties through the Rogue River, bring tourism back to this county, bring our fishing guides, their business back and all the ancillary business that that will bring into the county as well. I'm just excited about the whole thing and we look to move forward against the Corps of Engineers here in the coming weeks. Commissioner Boyce?
Uniqueness Oregon is our forest and our salmon, runs our fisheries. And so those are two things that we, we're all a little bit lax in trying to fiercely protect over the years. And so this is, and there's some other bills that I can talk about later, real quickly, that I think are a little bit related to the whole salmon and trout enhancement program, which started back in the 80s by then State Representative Bill Bradbury, who went on to be Secretary of State. And one of them's an incubation process. Instead of the hash boxes, we can talk about that later. But this is, this is a great time for Oregon and I, to have the state support on this, I'm sure it'll get through the Senate and then we'll, we'll anticipate the governor signing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, sir. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. Barnes, I'm kind of got a little buried there.
Yes, you did. Thank you. David Barnes, I, I've read the Byerlin, I've read Steve's report. I've read the report that it was generated from, which was the, I don't know the full name of it, but it was the Spring Chinook and Restoration. It was, it's the result of a study that they've been doing over the last 10, 15, 20 years. ODFW, I read in your, in your resolution on this that ODFW has not opposed this or has not argued any of the points in this. That's because there's no new points in it that weren't included in their plan. They've been working on this for years now. They've been studying this. And, you know, nothing against Mr. Byerlin personally, but all I see is he, he added some numbers to this. I, I don't understand why we would be paying a volunteer to do volunteer work. We have, you know, he wasn't asked to do this. He did this on his own. We have people on our budget committee who spend hundreds of hours a year. Last year, you had on the budget committee, there was a forensic auditor. This is, that was his expertise. He put in between 150 and 200 hours working on your budget last year. Are you going to pay him? Ms. Hunter spends a lot of time working on veterans' issues every year. Are you going to start paying her? I think it just sets a bad precedent that we start paying volunteers, especially for unsolicited work that they're doing. You know, I, I've spoken to people around, around here about this. And quite frankly, you know, people who I, I've spoken to are appalled that we're going to pay $5,000 of taxpayer money for something we didn't ask for and there's no, you know, or what is our intention here? Are we going to sue the Army Corps of Engineers? If so, we don't need Mr. Byerlin, we need a lawyer. We need his report and we need a lawyer. You know, you're, to say, how would you know when he's run out of his $5,000 if there's nothing in there about an hourly compensation? If there's nothing like that? Are you just going to, is it on Mr. Byerlin to just say that, you know, okay, well, I think I've done $5,000 worth of work now and I need more to keep going? It's just far too, this is just way too open and way too undefined. And I just, I think it's a mistake and I think it's a bad precedent to set to start paying volunteers, especially for unsolicited work that they put in.
Thank you.
That's just my two cents.
Okay. I will say this in a comment, you, you won't need to comment further, Mr. Mr. Barnes. I just want to make a comment that this was brought to the attention of everyone through Mr. Byerlin's research on this. People didn't even realize that the Corps of Engineers was no longer even managing or doing a minimal management of the Coal Rivers Hatchery. The Corps of Engineers questioned Mr. Byerlin's research and said that there was, they doubted its validity. And then they sent some engineers to the, to the hatchery and found millions of dollars worth of damage validating this research. This will potentially bring millions of dollars to this county. This will potentially bring millions of dollars to this county, and the research that Mr. Byerlin has done, if he were to hire outside counsel to defend this, I am sure that they would spend hundreds of thousands of dollars hiring experts to do the research so that when they bring their case in front of the court, that their case will have validity and strength. Mr. Byerlin is not just a volunteer in this county, he has voiced himself as an expert of over forty-five years, not only in Rogue River, uh, fish, and as a fishing guide, but as a legislator in Salem, and if I recall correctly, and please don't quote me on this, there was a time that Kitzhofer would not even let a fishing bill go through his office without Mr. Byerlin's stamp on it. Uh, he was also the president of the Oregon Fishing Guides Union, or organization, for years and years, so to, to just qualify him, and, and I know I also have a relationship with him personally, but to just qualify him as a volunteer, I think undermines his expertise, uh, in, in this field, and his research, um, is invaluable to this county moving forward to offer the Corps of Engineers a bill for their contract, and it's a simple contract law, for their contractual failures in the contracts that they signed in nineteen seventy-two, to guarantee this county and its constituents that they would take care of those hatcheries, to put the dam in, to build those hatcheries and take care of them, so that we would enjoy, our, our children and our grandchildren will enjoy Coho salmon coming down that river, spring chinooks, whatever type of salmon that, that they're charged to bring down that river, that they would do that in perpetuity to the numbers in those contracts, whether we had a drought, whether we had a flood, no matter what, we'll bring you thirteen thousand fish back to that hatchery every year, and the number dwindles to a point three eight of one percent this year. They're bringing back point three eight percent of their contract. I'm sorry, I'm, uh, getting a little off base here, but, uh, to categorize Mr. Byerlin as a volunteer here and not an expert in this field, um, it just kinda pushed the wrong button with me.
I'm sorry, but there's a lot of experts in your field who volunteer their time.
And I'm not saying there aren't.
And, you know, it, and, and Kitzhofer isn't the governor anymore, so, you know, I just, again, I just disagree with this, Mr...
Well, the bill, the bill that was just brought to Salem through Mr., through Mr. Smith, David Brock Smith?
Mm-hmm.
Was worked on through, uh, with Mr. Byerlin, and it just passed fifty-four to three, so evidently he does have some expertise in this.
I'm not, I'm not questioning his expertise at all. I, I'm not questioning that at all.
Well, you said Mr. Kitzhofer was no longer governor, I understand, but the now-governor is gonna face, again, Mr. Byerlin's work on this, because there is liability, and there is, there's, there's a lot to be done with this.
Like I suggested once before, then maybe it, the idea would be that if we get something, that we give him a percentage of it.
And, and we may do that, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, this is a lively discussion, and I, I love these times, because I think we grow and learn, and, uh, we, we start the process, or accelerate the process to problem solving. I'm thankful that, uh, certainly Josephine County saw the value of the investment in Mr. Uh, Byerlin. You know, it was just a, there's a lot of us who believe the Army Corps of Engineer Establishment there at Coal Rivers just simply sat with their feet up on the desk. So when he approached and challenged them on this, out of, out of the right kind of emotion, because of the, what is done to the fish runs in southern Oregon, two days later, Mel Tribune comes out with an article describing and defining what the Corps had, their lack of responsibility. The $15,000, uh, if Jackson County kicks in, that is gonna be a drop in the bucket with a travel that he'll have to do, and has been doing, and will do. Uh, I do still put him under the volunteer category, and when you have problems to solve as big as this county has, you better find the right people, and you better incorporate them into the plan, and the team, and the concept of how to work and overcome, and, you know, it's John Hitt, it's, uh, yes, Connie Hunter, uh, you know, I, I hope to live to see the day when we have a few extra bucks, we can say, yeah, you went above and beyond just a general, uh, volunteer, and we would like to, we'd like to offer this, and those days hopefully are coming, and that is if we do our job. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Alright, so, uh, I'd like to, do I have a motion?
I think I made the motion, didn't I?
Well, yes, actually, we had a motion and a second, and then I forgot that Mr. Uh, Mr. Barnes had asked. So any more, any further comment on this?
Clarify the motion in whose second, if you would, Mr. Chair.
I, I think it was you, you that made the motion.
Okay.
So the motion was that we accept, uh, the contract, fisheries contract, um, that Ms. Schmelzer has brought forward, uh, for Steve Byerlin and his Oregon Strong LLC. And we had a second from Commissioner Gold. Any further comments?
I don't believe I made the second.
JJ, do you have any record? I got a record, but JJ... Alright, so can I have a motion, please? Let's start over. Why don't we just start over? May I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
A second? I'll make the second. Any further comments? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold?
I'll have to say no because of, of the contract being a little loose for me.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Yes.
Motion carried, two to one.
Better day for the salmon, Mr. Chair.
Alright, we're going to eight C, or I'm sorry, eight B. Commissioner Boyce?
Yeah, there's been some, uh, concerns, some questions, uh, I, I think the contract has, has, uh, amended, uh, looks good to me, up to $5,000 for Mr. Hitt. Uh, not, uh, sure when or, uh, what time he would be returning, um, but we would have him on, I think about a third to, even up to half his time on planning, uh, downstairs, and, uh, helping us get caught up down there. We still have a lot of work in reorganization, correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, um, just clarification, so this is a second contract?
Yes.
So this is not amending the planning one, this is a, a freestanding contract?
Okay. I thought that was the same thing, but thank you, I appreciate that clarification. So, uh, but it is, uh, it is our expectation that he's gonna be working with planning, and then the other half of his time would be on, uh, special projects, um, and I can give examples, but, uh, I, I like the new contract, as you outlined, uh, up to $5,000. Uh, it's based on $35 an hour, which is raising him from twenty-five, uh, but we're starting to, uh, divert away from the fifty and fifty-five dollar an hour contracts, with the exception of roadmaster, uh, and, and Laura Lee with the, with the background she has. And that was his call.
Mr. Barnes?
Uh, Mr. Barnes, again, uh, this contract is written as for Mr. Hitt to go and explain the, uh, consumption tax on Saturday before the, uh, at the Curry Voices Forum. I don't understand what's to explain. Um, the, the ballot question is pretty self-explanatory, it's gonna be two to three percent, there's been no exemptions, or what's being taxed decided upon? You expect to collect between one and, or between one and a, or one and three million dollars on it, uh, average it out to fifteen or million and a half, um, and you expect that residents of Curry are gonna be paying half of that? What's there left to explain, except that it's $65 for each person who lives in Curry if you do this? This is, you've already spent between two and $4,000 rushing these two ballot questions, advisory ballot questions on. These are survey questions, they're not ballot questions. Mr. Hitt stood here before you over a month ago and said that this was very preliminary, needed more work, needed public workshops, needed public input, and now you wanna give him another $5,000 to perform a survey for you? I'm just, I'm appalled by this. I mean, your spending is just really, like I said before, $330,000 in ten, in the first hundred days. This is incredible to me. You know, Commissioner Boyce, this was your, the consumption tax was your idea, it was your proposal. I believe it's on you, your jobs as commissioners to go out and defend it to the people, not to hire somebody else for $5,000 to do it. I, I'm highly opposed to this, you know, I, if, you know, we now have three full-time commissioners, we have a full-time Director of Operations, we have a full-time planner, we have a full-time economic coordinator. You know, we're just, we're, I, I'm, I don't mean to question the validity or the merit of any of your spending, but you're going through money quick around here, and as a taxpayer, it's kinda shocking to me that you both, that everybody up here ran off fiscal conservancy, and yet you're blowing through thirty-three hundred dollars a day. I just, I'm opposed to this, you know? Commissioner Boyce, this was your idea, it got rushed through. I don't know, what else is Commissioner, what else is Mr. Hitt going to explain to us? There are no exemptions, you don't know what's going to be taxed, what's to explain? You know, why would you pay somebody $5,000 to come out there and do it?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's been a, many have heard me speak, uh, the activity of the full legislation this year. I had my fingers crossed that, uh, they wouldn't come up with a sales tax, and that Curry County might be able to be the, the, uh, the first one that could actually do that, and I think Mr. Hitt reported, uh, oh, a couple months ago, or six weeks ago, that forty percent of that would come from outside the Curry County paying citizen tax base. So, the House bill is, uh, I think it's thirty-four twenty-seven, uh, I have a letter to your, uh, that's, uh, it's being opposed by the Roseburg Chamber Commerce, but I think it's probably gonna be too late. So, um, I don't think there's gonna be a need for Mr. Hitt to go to the town hall on Saturday, because, uh, with the amount of work, almost pleading with the previous board that I did, help me at least get this to the voters. Anything we can do to, 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 uh, show the, show the public how this could benefit us for law enforcement, paying back the, uh, the road fund reserves, tourism promotion, uh, I've got a list here, uh, and I, I, it's just gonna be a moot point, because the state's gonna beat us, and I, I did everything humanly possible to avoid that, and so if that happens, and that House Bill thirty-four twenty-seven goes through, we lost that window. So, uh, does anybody have a better idea how we can raise money? We know we can't support county services on property taxes only.
Mr. Barnes?
So, uh, we may not need Mr. Hitt, and, and so I don't know what I'm gonna do about Saturday yet, I'd like to attend, uh, I may call in, but I don't have anything, I, I think it's a waste of time to promote a Curry County's consumption tax, and as far as the exemptions go, non-labeled foods, pharmaceutical, medicine. So, if the poor folks go out and buy, uh, bananas, no tax. Everybody pays, yeah, so, and, and forty percent of it comes from tourism, fifteen percent goes into, but I, like I say, I think it's a waste of time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barnes, you've had your comment, and I've given you a wide latitude in these meetings, but we need to move this meeting along, I've got a public hearing waiting to happen here, two public hearing, actually, and you've made your comments on this, so if you would, please stand down. Thank you. I have, I, I would like to say on this, um, because he's not going to be needed for the April twentieth meeting that you've just stated, I honestly, I'm just reading this, and if you, if, if you would give me a week on this, we'll have another meeting to approve this next week, but I, here's one of those things that I know I can read through this.
I think that's fine, Mr. Chair, I was, I, I've decided not to ask the board, uh, for approval for Saturday.
Okay.
You know, I had three days ahead of time, I just don't think there's gonna be any need, because I think, again, the state's gonna, and all that money that we get charged to our tourists is gonna leave Curry County, it's not gonna go to law enforcement.
So then we're not gonna...
Very frustrating for me.
I understand, sir. And so we're not gonna have a, a motion on this, on this then, uh, at this time?
That's fine.
So, um, I'd like to stand down on C because we have Ms. Colstrom here, and it is the time for our public hearing. Um, we will move forward with C after, uh, and move forward with seven A supplemental budget, uh, payrolls. Ms. Colstrom?
Uh, so this is, uh, opening the public hearing, um, um, that was advertised for these two supplemental budgets that I'm presenting today, um, and I'd just like to know if there's any public comment, um, open for hearing.
None?
Hearing that, I'll present the supplemental budgets. Supplemental budget number eight is payroll adjustments, um, per the two thousand eighteen, nineteen negotiated, um, payroll with the unions or board actions for payroll for, um, for this year's payroll, um, that was done during this fiscal year. So, um, it's several pages of, uh, supplemental, um, the exhibit A is, uh, showing the transfers to cover, um, the negotiated payroll or other board actions, um, for, uh, the first two pages are general fund, and the revenue to provide for this is to increase our carryover balance, um, and revenue to cover these costs. And then the next, um, three pages, three, four pages are payroll outside of the general fund, and, um, some of these, uh, are transfers from the, um, general fund, which is increasing that, uh, carryover balance once again to cover these, and some of them were taken care of within the fund itself. Are there any questions on any of these transfers? Or are you still just looking at it?
One moment, please, stand by.
Go ahead.
At this point, at this moment, I don't have any. Commissioner Gold?
I don't have any questions at this point.
Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you. No.
None.
Um, so, there is a resolution for, uh, um, supplemental budget number eight.
Do you have a motion, please?
I move that we approve supplemental budget number eight, exhibit A.
Have a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any further comments? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried.
It's that one?
I think it's his.
JJ's.
The second, um, supplemental budget is supplemental budget number nine. It's transferring from the Road Capital Improvement Fund to the Towers Capital Improvement Fund for the microwave system, um, microwave system upgrade that's in this, that was approved by the board. So, I did, uh, do, uh, I kind of rounded up the amount that was in this upgrade quote to, um, allow for, uh, the kind of, um, legal advertisements and stuff besides just purchasing the equipment. So, um, exhibit A is, uh, the side that's the Towers Capital Improvement, and so it brings in a transfer from the Road Capital Improvement Fund, and then, um, other materials and supplies of a thousand, I'm not exactly sure if those are legal ads or whatever else you might need to do to, um, get this contract going, and then also the capital outlay itself. Exhibit B is the Road Capital Improvement, and it's moving, um, money out of other materials and services, um, and into, uh, transfers, um, to the Towers. So this is a resolution also, um, for, uh, the budget to be modified as detailed in exhibits A and B.
Commissioner Gold, do you have any comments or questions?
Uh, I think it's very important that we take care of the Towers issue, and this will allow us to do so.
Okay, do you have, Commissioner Boyce, do you have any questions for Ms. Colstrom?
No, I'll make a motion when you're ready.
I, I have none as well. A motion, please?
To, uh, accept the supplemental budget, uh, number nine for Towers.
Second?
I'll second that.
Further comments? Roll, please.
Mr. Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Alright, Ms. Colstrom, thank you.
Um, if, if I, uh, could, after the meeting today, I would... I would appreciate it if all of the commissioners sign the resolutions so it can get over and get recorded so I can get it back in time for it to be in this budget document.
I usually try and sign everything on that day, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving back to action items, B, C?
Okay.
Weird to say.
Right. So, B, C is Plan Commission. We had three people apply for our Plan Commission spot. Mr. King sent an email and rescinded his application.
I saw that.
So, we have two to choose from. One, they're both in your packet, but we need to choose one for the two-year position.
Okay. Just one minute because I got to go all the way back and find it because it's in the...
Yeah, I have to find it, too.
The front part.
So, it is for the... To appoint one at-large member, two-year term. The applications we have are from Carl King, which was rescinded, and then Michael Lang, and then Frank Grumrev. Not sure I'm saying that last name correctly, but the term would go until April of 2021.
Just getting to them now, so...
While you're looking, Mr. Chair, I had requested a ballot vote if we could.
Oh, yes, you're right. Does everyone have some paper to write on?
We can dig something up.
We can't afford the extra paper now.
Maybe you could just... This thing, sorry.
He's got a piece.
Yeah, I got three.
Oh, Court's got a whole yellow pad.
Rip that into three pieces.
There's for you and Commissioner Gold. You know, we're always discussing whether we should have five or seven. We should just have them both. We'd have an even number, wouldn't we? We'd have six instead of five?
Well, the board recently amended the ordinance to change the number of Plan Commission members that we used to have. So, I forget what the number was and what we went down to.
Right?
Right.
So, we have five now. We have seven, John?
Commissioner, now, it used to be nine.
Okay, so this... So, we have six presently, and this is adding the seventh, or...
Right.
Okay.
Who's going to count these?
Counsel, huddle, pen.
There you go.
Be fair.
Does everyone give me one, or?
I haven't yet.
Yeah, that's what I mean, so I'm...
Still looking, yes.
Good, all right. Sure.
All right, I'm going to ask, can we...
So, how many... We're voting for one, or?
Yeah.
Voting for one.
Very good.
Can we offer... To have an alternate? Second place is an alternate?
I'd have to look at their...
I don't think they have alternates.
I don't think they have... Yeah. So, what happens is they have an... They actually have text in their land use code that describes how the Plan Commission is formed. And the board did amend that actual code about a year ago. This time of year, actually, I think, last year. And they did not have an alternate in there. So, we would have to go back and amend the code in order to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Give your votes. And then, counsel, if you would, please, you can... Because it's a ballot like this, handwritings could be recognized if you would please dispose of them properly after.
I thought everything had to be done in public.
Well, it is a public vote. They're hearing the vote.
Right, the record will reflect... So, again, I think the record will reflect that there were two votes for Michael Lang. And that's, I think, is public. And then, as far as who cast those votes, we're not doing a roll call vote. We're just doing a ballot vote. So, we have two votes for Lang, which I think constitutes an appointment for him.
So, you're... If I may?
Yes.
You're content that we just did and acted properly?
Right, in other words, we didn't... I don't believe we have to do a roll call vote on an appointment. We've done a ballot appointment, and the commissioners wrote down the names of their appointees on each commissioner wrote on a piece of paper. I received three pieces of paper. Two of those pieces of paper had Lang's name on them, which I considered to be votes for Lang, and one had the other. I didn't memorize it. So, I reflect... I think the record will reflect there were two votes by the Board of Commissioners today for Lang to be appointed to the Plan Commission.
And I've seen the prior board to my being sworn do exactly that as well.
Twice? Yes, thank you. Twice in 2018, or 18, I'm sorry.
Is there an objection to the way we did that?
No.
Okay. All right. Moving on to 9A, short-term rental housing. Ms. Schmelzer?
I put this on the agenda because there has been some discussion about our housing crisis, lack of housing for employees, residents, et cetera. So, I talked to Ms. Crockett how our zoning ordinance currently regulates short-term rental. And it doesn't regulate short-term rentals. So, what you have sometimes is a county will say you cannot have any transient, or transient meaning short-term rentals, unless it goes through a permitting process such as a process to be permitted as a bed and breakfast. In our county, we don't have such a code. So, what we find is a lot of the second homes or homes that are available that could be used for permanent housing for people is actually put on reserve and used for Airbnbs or transient housing options. So, I just have this on the agenda, I guess, food for thought or some direction as to whether you want to workshop on it or as to explore this further. And that being, should the county be looking at an ordinance which does not allow additional transient housing without going through an actual bed and breakfast permit? There's not much we could do about the hundreds of Airbnbs that are out there right now. We do know that they're out there. If the transient lodging tax passes, we'll be able to collect a tax on them. But looking forward at housing options for people. Are we putting too much of our housing stock into that transient system? And therefore, that's causing us the housing shortage that we need for people? So, just looking for some direction on that.
So, you're saying right now, in this county, there's currently no permitting or licensing required for an Airbnb or bed and breakfast?
For an Airbnb, that is correct. Now, if you were going to go a full-blown bed and breakfast and come in and get, I believe it would be a conditional use permit. That's a different process. That's also when you're renting like a room at a time. But if you're renting your entire home, such as we see people do on Airbnb, we do not have a process right now for those.
You asked for direction. My direction would be that everyone that rents property to the public at large for any reason, for vacation rental, should have to be licensed to do that. Make sure they're properly insured to do that. Make sure that the property that is being rented is legal to rent as far as the utilities, the services in that property. And of course, then they would be on the rolls for the TLT taxes as well. And we could then gauge more accurately our TLT taxes and where this county stands on housing. That would be my preference. Commissioner Gold?
I agree with your statements, but I'm wondering if these folks that already have these non-licensed places, would they have to be grandfathered in? So...
Counsel?
No. We can create a new law and make it apply prospectively. We couldn't go after them for what they did in the past. We couldn't say, "In the past, you didn't have a license. We have a license now." But we can make people get licenses now.
Okay. Commissioner Gold?
I think that's probably really wise, especially if the TLT passes because otherwise, you would have no way of knowing what's going on out there.
Well, that's... I think the first step in this would be inventorying them all. And once we have an accurate inventory, then planning can go forward with licensing once we have an ordinance to that effect. That would be my hope, is that we could move forward immediately on this. Let's get it on the... As an action item, that we can start to move forward with an ordinance, that everyone that rents properties in this... It has to be fair. You cannot ask a hotel or a motel to charge a TLT to people and his next-door neighbor is an Airbnb and he gets a pass. That's just... That's not fair. And I think we are charged to do as much of that as we can. So, I'd like to move that forward, to get an ordinance on this. Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Talking to Lincoln County Commissioner. He used the word epidemic up there, that unregistered or unlisted, uninventoried, as you just said a minute ago, bed and breakfast. And for the TLT tax, I'm a little puzzled, maybe fuzzy, on where we are with the RV. I was talking the other day to one of the presenters, and they felt like we were fairly well organized there, but I'm not sure about that. So, this might be, to your point, accelerate this, start that inventory, I think could be, should be very helpful.
And there's another way that, again, I think we probably are going to need another code enforcement officer. And this is things that code enforcement can deal with immediately. Commissioner Gold?
I was just going to say, relative to code enforcement, a lot of times, these places that are rented out are way out of code. And this would, you know, help take care of that problem.
Do you think a lot of operators will come in on their own when they see that we're trying to get disorganized? Okay.
Ms. Schmelzer?
Planning Director Crockett is here now, so in case she... Becky, I'm not sure if you have anything you want to add or some comments you want to make.
Nice sunglasses.
Apologize, I missed the whole thing. I just wanted to let you know that there's actually a lot of information out there on short-term rentals. In fact, the University of Oregon just commissioned a study, and the study includes looking at places, including Curry County, City of Brookings, Port Orford, and Gold Beach. Essentially, when the time this was done a couple of years ago, they determined that about 2% of our housing is... Was being taken up in these short-term rentals. Since then, you can expect that it's probably quadrupled that. What's really good about this study that's been done is it looked at the difference between using a zoning code for enforcement and for setting regulations. And it also looked at licensing. So, it compared both of them, and it also looked at collecting fees, which was a fairly significant part of this study. And I do apologize for missing the discussion.
Well, I'd appreciate a copy of that study if you could get it to us.
Absolutely.
And then, we can make a more accurate decision. But I would like to move this forward in just the coming weeks. Let's move this forward.
You... We talked about it, and I think two years ago, we... The board tried to do a county-wide license, and it kind of went... Didn't go real well. But maybe it's time to look at that and incorporate it in with this effort here. Or do you want to discuss that down the road, or?
Well, I think we need to move forward with the ordinance because, again, here's a case that then our hotel owners are going to look at us and say, "Well, why do they get a pass and I don't on the TLT?" I mean, if you're... If we're going to expect the constituents of this county to support a TLT tax, it has to be fair to everyone that rents property for vacation or short-term rentals in the county. It has to be fair that way. And that's my two cents. Ms. Schmelzer?
Business license.
So, about a month, month and a half ago, the board directed staff to look into business licensing. So, just as a separate note, I just want to make sure that you're aware that we are still working on that. The economic development coordinator is actually working on the business license right now.
And I don't think the license fees in this are going to be exorbitant. It's just a way to get everybody to the table equally so that we know the accurate inventories of this, and they can be... The TLT tax will work equally for everyone.
Totally agree.
Helps us provide better services for them.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, so, Ms. Schmelzer, if you don't mind, we'd like...
I don't mean to interrupt. We're coming up on the noon hour, and I was wondering if you considered doing the executive session because at 1:00, I have a very important meeting that I have to attend on a conference with the OSSA. And then, at 2:00, I have a very important meeting. You have to be at the hospital over there with Creary Community Health and the hospital.
Good. Well, if you'd just give us a couple of minutes to finish this, then we'll do that.
Okay.
Great.
So, Ms. Schmelzer, can I get a motion? Or do we need a motion even just to direct you to...
Just a direction.
Move this forward and get this on as an action item in the coming weeks. And during that time, we can review Ms. Crockett's presentation that she had for us.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so, at this time, why don't we do that? We'll go ahead and move to executive session. Executive session will be per 192.6602D to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. So, this meeting is in recess? Oh, okay, good. Thank you. We need the other card, don't we? Just take five minutes. Good.
We have these parks which are set up to protect and preserve biodiversity. That's challenging under any circumstances. But it certainly is almost impossible if you don't know what the actual biodiversity that's in your park or the area that you're trying to conserve is.
A bio blitz is a celebration of biodiversity. Biodiversity is the variety of life in an area. We don't know how much life and what types of life are here at Crater Lake National Park. The big obvious things we know about. But a bio blitz is where we go out and look for a particular type of organism. This year, we're looking for beetles or the order Coleoptera.
The wealth of biodiversity that are in these parks, 99% of it is something that could fit in your hand.
We can't save what we don't know exists. So if there's a beetle species out there that's very important and we don't know about it, we can't do anything to help it. That is the ultimate goal of the bio blitz. It's a way that citizens can come here. We have volunteers that are here who are actually giving this information. They're using their time to help the scientists build a greater picture of what kind of beetles are here in this park.
Getting this sort of baseline data of what biodiversity is there, not only shows us what's there, which is just intrinsically interesting for its own purpose, but it also begins to set a baseline. And that baseline data set is what we then can use. And not just scientists, but the general public and those land managers, the, the stakeholders in that bio blitz, can use those observations then on into the future to understand if things are changing.
It's not so much about counting number of species, it's more about seeing a fuller picture of the biodiversity. And the biodiversity is the variety of different types of organisms, different types of species.
I do believe that in their past bio blitzes that they have expanded the number of things they now had recorded from the park, but also confirmed that some of the things that were reported historically are still present. So even if it's not a new discovery for the park, it still creates another piece of data that tells us, yes, that thing still lives here and is still thriving or, or maybe struggling, but, but we begin to learn something about it. I think that has an intrinsic value to the park for its long-term future, but it also just has an intrinsic social value. When you ask questions about why do we have these parks? And there's lots of ways to answer that question, but one of them is that the parks are these areas where we, where we go to appreciate the wildlife there. And this is a way of tapping into some of that wildlife at all sorts of different levels. One of the key things besides the biology that's involved in these bio blitzes is the interaction with the public and the opportunity to educate the public about the biodiversity around them.
The citizen scientists are here working alongside professional scientists. And that allows them not just to connect with science here at the park, but connect with the greater scientific community. It's a, it's a real positive thing. We see all ages coming here and, uh, and they're just acting like kids out searching for bugs, but they're doing real science at the same time. It's a great connection between this amazing resource and the people that live around it.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are and I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs. And it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire. So we just thought that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower 48 states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the national forests down to the protected ocean, and it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was though, until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded, we're unspoiled, and we're a little difficult to get to, but my God, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go, we just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm gonna be honest, when the Rural Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally. And I'm pleasantly surprised, it's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's gonna benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves and I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas. Outdoor recreation, food and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships.
In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all gets shipped away. And so now we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Eat Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events, bringing together the area growers with the area vendors so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants, and we have a new local food co-op.
We created a farm trail from Bannon to Port Orford. We did nine U-Pic farms and it just gained traction and people loved it.
Langlois is less than 500 people, it's very small. So we have to bring in tourists. And being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really want to make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began Dragonfly Farm just three years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, oh my gosh, why wouldn't you do this? I just quit my, my day job and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I want to do for the rest of my life and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're gonna send people now and we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive. We're patting ourselves on the back. I don't know what anybody else is, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help. So we came up with a mountain bike plan. And we also worked on designating a state scenic bikeway. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area. So we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station. So now people that want to come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the Rural Tourism Studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small. And now we've grown to about five or six guides and we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Cuz Bay.
Overall, tourism is on the rise here. We've had a bang up last two years and it's like a breath of fresh air down here.
My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have and it's a balance. We're gonna promote tourism, but we want to do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area has been so successful since the tourism studio is the people that are involved. We have a lot of great, motivated, smart people who understand the need to promote tourism in the right way. And it's really all about the people.
When you live in a rural community like we do, from Bannon down to Brookings, and you're strapped for cash, relationships are crucial.
As a community, I think you need to come together and find out what your mission and goals are collectively. Then you can work into smaller groups, knowing that you have the backing of the whole community behind you.
As long as everybody's just super excited about it and passionate about what they're doing and they can work together, then anything's possible.
Own what you have and don't try to be something that you're not. It's gonna be hard, it's gonna take a long time, so roll up your sleeves and just dig in with an open mind.
National parks are one of America's crowning achievements. After all, it was in this country that the idea of setting areas aside for preservation was born. They are a symbol of democracy and exist as places where one can appreciate the beauty and complexity of the natural world, free of human influence. In the past, national parks faced challenges brought on primarily by the industries and practices that threatened them. Today, similar challenges persist, as well as some new ones. High up in the Cascades, Crater Lake National Park remains a pristine natural area enjoyed by visitors from throughout the world. But in recent years, new circumstances have come to endanger the ecosystem of the park. Invasive plant species are beginning to spread and threaten the park's natural biodiversity. An invasive species is an organism that did not originate in an ecosystem and is often introduced by humans. In recent years, Crater Lake National Park biologists have documented a rise in the number of non-native plant species found within the park. Invasive plant species have various ways of spreading throughout Crater Lake National Park.
You put, that's where you laid it, dude.
Council Huddle.
Thank you.
How's that for a quick service?
Back on, back on.
We are back on and we are back in session. So we have left, uh, we may run a few minutes over on lunch if we have to, depending on Mr. Boyce. I'm just joking. I gotta pick on you sometimes, pal. Uh, director's report, Ms. Melzer?
Okay, just a couple of things to report here. Um, as you know, the Economic Development Coordinator, Commissioner Gold, and I have been discussing education, youth development. Commissioner Gold can probably report on Monday's meeting, I'm not sure if you were there or not, I was on vacation, but I just wanted to let you know, I did write out, reach out to a known grant writer who is very skilled at writing grants for youth education. And she did get back to me and she said she charges $60 an hour. There's a big USDA grant that could help fund some of our internships, youth development, things of that nature, so it's something we'll want to look at and see if that's something we're interested in. I need a little bit more information on the direction that the school districts want to go on that. Also asked her about, uh, grant writing to help the port and she does not, um, that's not her specialty, but she is trying to find somebody that would be able to help the ports with some of their grant writing as well.
Good.
As far as our strategic plan goes, um, the deadline to apply for, to the, respond to the IRFP is not over yet, but we've had, I would say about five, five people asking questions and direction, are we okay with small plans versus large plans and things of that nature? So we have had good responses so far to that. Building Official, I would like to bring that forward to the board for, as an action item next week. We do have some, you know, an interested party. He is going to be meeting with staff on Tuesday night to see, you know, if they, how they respond to him and, you know, start that relationship. Based on that, um, response, hopefully we could appoint him at Wednesday's meeting. So I'll be bringing that back, um, if everything works out on that one. And then, um, I apologize, Commissioner, Commissioner Boyce, you did have, you wanted a Golds discussion on this agenda and I missed that, so we'll be putting that on the next one.
Terrific.
And then, um, just.
By the way, that could even be the first Wednesday in May if you want to do that, but next, I don't know if, how, how busy we're gonna be on the 24th, 24th, other than the workshop.
Yeah, so, so then just, uh, update the workshop, next, uh, on the 24th is at 6:00 PM. The first thing on there is PEG Access, it's a presentation by Carl King. If you remember, he came and he said he wanted to present to us, so we scheduled it for the 24th. And then after that is the SASSO workshop. So they start at 6:00.
What time is the BLC meeting?
Um, there's a meeting earlier that day, 9:00? 9:00 AM.
So how are you gonna handle JJ with overtime and so forth? That may get pretty late.
Yes.
Why can't we bring him in at noon? Didn't we discuss that?
Well, we have a 9:00 AM meeting, 9:00 AM meeting.
So let Summer cover or, uh, Brenda? Why not? And in addition, if I may, we could, maybe we need to talk about that or think about that, but also I'm asking for a 5:00, uh, ahead of SASSO, just in the interest of people coming here. Let's see, what, what did you just reference there, uh?
Uh, we have PEG Access and then SASSO and the workshop.
So why don't we have that one come in at 5:00 and then we're also working with the vets, we're also working with ODOT. Uh, you know, it's kind of hard to schedule a week ahead of time, uh, and, and get them here, but, um, and there was one other.
I know on PEG, he was originally, Carl.
How much time do you think he needs?
Um, Carl will have about a half hour.
Okay.
But initially, that conversation was supposed to be at a 2:00 PM workshop and then we told him it was a 6:00 PM workshop. We can see if 5:00 would work for him, but, um, he is scheduled at 6:00 right now. Cause the workshop is supposed to start at 6:00.
I don't know how that got ahead of the, the SASSO deal though, though, cause that was where we, we, we tried to nail it down at that one specific time. Uh, so, um, you know, then you don't have people waiting that are disinterested in whatever the, you know, I, and we are also, as far as the veterans' presentation, we were looking at possibly getting the new director from Roseburg here, the VA Director, so, um, and I'd love to have a reporter from ODOT, I mean, with what they're dealing with. So, should we have a presentation, maybe during the, the regular business meeting at 9:00?
Well, if they're, if you're looking for ODOT to do a presentation, they can do that, that should be done at a 9:00 AM meeting. And then if you're introducing the VSO.
That's why I was kind of thinking they might, okay, that's fine, I'll see.
The reason why PEG got ahead of SASSO is because we told PEG a long, quite a while ago, this is the day we're gonna put you on, but they were put on for 2:00 in the afternoon. But then last week or was, maybe it was the week before, the board agreed to allow SASSO to come in for an evening workshop. So we had to cancel that afternoon one with Carl and push it to an evening one.
I was never doing the 2:00. I think that's just because that's the normal time?
Yeah, it was always on our schedule, it was on our schedule that we agreed to, that's why we had a 2:00 schedule.
Well, again, Mr. Chair, I want to do what's best and easiest for the citizens and so, uh, 5:00 is, in the time sequence, I think that would be fairly well organized and, uh, I, I would assume that PEG folks would have a different.
5:00 for what? For the SASSO?
For, no.
Oh, for, uh, King?
Yes.
And then the other workshop starts at 7:00, right?
6:00.
Or 6:00.
So there may be a half hour in between there then where we have.
Fill it with something that's important.
He sings.
Huh?
You sing, right?
Oh. I got friends in low places.
You know, the other, the other thing is just to continue on with 6:00 as scheduled, that's, Carl is expecting 6:00.
Yeah, then we bump a bunch, I don't, I'm sorry, I, okay. Then we got a bunch of people that are waiting around, uh, for a long, I, I, they, they were, this was three months ago we talked to these people, the Second Amendment folks, three months ago. We've canceled, we postponed, we tell them 6:00, you know, and so they can drive to get here.
It's still 6:00, isn't it?
Yeah, they're after the PEG, so it'll actually be 6:30.
Well, try to get the PEG at 5:30.
I was, but I didn't go over too good, or 5:00.
If the board wants to reschedule the meeting time to start at 5:00 or 5:30, we can do that. It's just that I can't just do that on my own.
Why don't we, why don't we try and move it to 5:30?
5:30, okay.
And then if, if Mr. King isn't comfortable with that, then, then I'm sorry, but we'll have to reschedule them.
One more thing, while we're going to that trouble to have an evening meeting, are we limiting ourselves to just one or two topics? I'm thinking, why wouldn't we want to have a third one if it's, if it figures for pay for all the expense we have to do this?
I suspect SASSO is gonna be very long and I think adding topics to that is not a good idea.
I'm trying to add them prior.
I see what you're saying.
Okay.
Got it.
Let's just stick with two.
Two? Starting at 5:30?
For now.
Yeah.
5:30, okay.
Thank you.
Now we're there, that'll keep, keep their reserve time. And if Mr. King can't deal with that, then we can move him to the following week or whatever we need to do.
I'm sure he'll be, well, I'll ask him if he'll be fine with that.
Hopefully he understands, yeah.
And, and no offense, but SASSO was before him. I just kind of emphasized that.
Alrighty. Was that it, Ms. Melzer?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyce, up on the commissioner updates?
Uh, a lot of bills of interest, I'm not gonna go through them all, of course, but let's see here.
Let me, let me ask this, uh, before we even start with this, uh?
I need 20 minutes, probably, yeah.
And that's what I'm saying, it's 10 minutes to 12. Do we want to go over for lunch? Uh, I need 5 minutes. So if you're gonna be 20 minutes, we're probably gonna be 15, uh, 15 minutes late. Is everyone okay with that or do we want to meet after lunch? We do have a 2:00 workshop.
I'm fine either way.
I'm fine to stay.
I'm fine, but what about JJ?
JJ, you're good? Council? Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. He still gets an hour lunch? Okay. You'll still have your hour lunch? You'll still have your hour lunch, yes, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you. Democrat, Republican, Conservative, Liberal, uh, these two though have got some great exposure around the entire state, and I'm proud that, uh, uh, this is in the ruralite, um, a month ago, March, yes, March two thousand nineteen, and they're, they're just recognized as being very effective, very productive legislators, and, uh, the pilot had an excellent article ten days ago, two weeks, uh, that showed the different bills that David Brock Smith have, you know? Sometimes they try and have a marathon where they introduce as many bills as they possibly can, makes them look good. But Brock Smith's bills, so many of them have life after the, the various, the primary deadline. So, um, I'll go over just a couple of these, not just his bills, but, uh, there's, there's some Senate bills here as well, uh, that, that are very pertinent and important to Curry County. Senate Bill three-three-nine includes land use primarily for cultivating crops with definition of rain, rangeland. Basically, that's an overproduction, or, or, excuse me, overpopulation, I'm sorry, of elk in, uh, east of central Oregon, in, in, basically central eastern Oregon. And so, uh, Curry County might get some of those elk one of those, one of those days, but they're basically making it very tough on the ranchers there. And so, I thought that might be of interest to Curry citizens. Senate Bill nine-three-one, um, establishes requirements for sending notifications to State Forestry Department by operator, timber owner, or landowner proposing forest operation involving aerial application of pesticides. AOC opposes, and the reason is that the Oregon Department of Forestry has a tremendous track record of properly notifying, uh, property owners, homeowners, uh, well, it's not around homeowner, but, uh, forest, uh, forest stands so that, uh, when, and they have to pick the perfect day, uh, weather condition, wind conditions, what have you. And so, that has been a little bit of an issue in Curry County, and right now, uh, it's in judiciary, and, uh, I, I have no idea what kind of life that might have. SB one zero-zero-one, direct state court administrator to study issues relating to court records and report to Committee on Interim, Committee of Legislative Assembly, no later than such and such. And it basically comes down to who controls the, the records, the state or the local district attorneys. Uh, AOC and the district attorneys support that bill. Senate Bill nine-seven-eight, the, the gun bill, I won't spend a lot of time on that, is in judiciary, but that has a lot of Oregonians, there's been tremendous, uh, I don't want to say demonstrations, but testimony and a lot of activity at the Capitol, people are afraid that their gun rights are going to be taken away. And when you read this bill and the people that are behind it, it is reason for some reasonable concern. Director Schmelzer put this on my desk not too long ago, House Bill twenty-four-twenty, carried over from the four-ten agenda, uh, requires that municipal building officials be employed by municipality or council governments or under, intergovernmental agreement. Basically, this limits the authority of the small cities and the counties to hire their own. And it has that state label that would, uh, be very expensive generally for the counties and the cities. And so, I, um, I think at some point we might want to write a letter in opposition to that. AOC also opposes that, Association of Oregon Counties, of course. House Bill thirty-one-eighteen, the Cougar Bill, uh, I'll spare reading just even the short paragraph. But, once again, we have double the Cougar populations in Oregon, we should have, some of the rural counties are really supporting this bill, uh, to control those populations, and in conjunction, of course, with, uh, the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. They eat one deer a week, they have cubs, they eat two deer a week, and then the elk population that eat the ground fuels that bring us the mega fires. So right now, it has without recommendation as to passage, and it's referred to the Rules Committee. This is a big one, House Bill, and this is David Brock Smith's bill, uh, House Bill twenty-three-sixty-five, sudden no death. AOC supports, and we almost had unanimous on that, I'm proud to say, with the board. They're, the, the writers though, uh, in, uh, the language they used was pest management. Well, this is, uh, this has nothing to do with pests, it's a pathogen, so I'll bring you up to date on that more, but that's a lot of money to hopefully, uh, do away with the original strain of, uh, excuse me, to, uh, manage the original strain and do away with the European strain. It still is isolated in Curry County, the quarantine area is not necessarily growing, uh, but I don't miss a meeting on any of those with the task force, incredibly important for the county. House Bill twenty-eight forty-one, fish bill, uh, I'll spare you on that one. It's manage or protect described fish and wildlife species. Oregon's starting to figure it out, both political sides are starting to figure out what we got at risk with our fish. Twenty-three-seventy-eight, uh, that's our bill, and, uh, as you said, uh, it, it passed with an overwhelming majority. The support of Joe County is just, uh, I'm not surprised, but incredibly thankful for. And then the twenty-three-seventy-nine, um, no, I'll skip that one, but we do have the incubator, uh, bill. We also have the sediment bill, the study, the amount of, of, uh, aggregate that's coming down the river during the wintertime. It's, it's piling up underneath the Rogue River Bridge, and that is something that we're gonna need some help on. House Bill twenty-two twenty, the, the carbon policy, um, it's, uh, it's moving. And to the extent that'll affect, I'd like to make a report on that sometime, um, not today, but how that would affect our county, uh, what it would do to fuel prices, what it would do to families, uh, just transportation of food here, would go up unbelievably. Uh, House Bill twenty-five sixty-five, uh, is three point six million. Each county's gonna get a hundred thousand, and it's basically designated to get an assistant for all, each of the counties, uh, uh, emergency management, management coordinators. And I think that's, that right now is, uh, it's going to the Senate. So that's, that's, that's something that, uh, a person like Jeremy Dumeier can use, and so I, I think that's got a very likely pass. And then I'm watching the one with the Constitution on the, the Chief Justice, Supreme Court determines that remodeling, renovation, expansion of court facilities, I want to get you a copy of that bill, I'll send it to Director Schmelzer, and I think that's, uh, that's through Public Safety, the AOC Committee there, uh, is supporting that bill. Senate Bill nine-four-one, uh, let's see. They all went in, they are, they are pushing that one point seven for the Curry Health District to support the opening of an emergency room, and, uh, that's doing very well, doing very well. It went to Ways and Means. Two other bills that, oh no, I mentioned those, okay. So, um, a couple of other things here, uh, the Wolf Committee, uh, I finally got ahold of the Director's Office. She put me in, uh, in contact with Jason Barber, and I have that letter here somewhere. But it's not good news.
Yeah, they disallowed it.
Did you see it? Okay, so you're, you're aware of that, uh, they're not gonna make, uh, an exception for Cusack and Currie, here it is. I'll just, it's just a short paragraph, I'll just, anyway, uh, at the bottom of the main paragraph, "I can also add that I receive several requests a year from county financial personnel, da-da. In speaking with Commissioner Boyce, I know you have a meeting coming up in the near future, wish I had better news for you." So, we're gonna have to do our own Wolf Committee, and we need to get started on that right away, in my opinion, Mr. Chair. Cap and trade, I talked about that a little bit, uh, and then on, one of our citizens gave testimony about a month ago, why did, uh, the Rogue Valley Forest Collaborative, uh, get six million dollars, uh, for, uh, new forest management? And, and it's, it's indirectly tied to the governor's, uh, Forest Council, or, excuse me, Fire Suppression Council. And, um, and primarily it's because they got a matching from Ashland. And so I'm gonna keep working with Eric Hartsign. Courtney Schaaf made a presentation at the AOC, uh, Board Meeting last, a week ago, Monday, and, uh, she got me in touch with him, and so I'm hopeful that we can follow through per, it was David Barnes who made the request on why is in Curry County getting this money, and I've been behind the scenes working on this over time. And so, yeah, we deserve some of the same. We talked a little bit about the Curry Consumption Tax, uh, briefly. It's, it's what I've called a fifteen-fifteen plan. I may not be able to report on this anymore again, because I said earlier, it's likely not to be necessary if that tourism bill passes, uh, through, House Bill thirty-four twenty-seven. But the, the fifteen-fifteen plan is fifteen percent for public safety, fifteen for visitor promotion, fifteen for county parks development, fifteen for repay road fund reserves, fifteen percent for administration related, which would be eight percent to the county, seven percent to the businesses for collecting, economic development and housing fifteen percent, the harbor, Port Orford, and Langless water systems combined would be ten percent. So, on the, uh, yeah, I'm just hoping that that tourism tax fails, and we would still have a chance down there. Twenty-four-twenty, wherever we talked about. I want to give a quick report from Billy Williams, and I think if the people are listening, and after the sheriff's report today, uh, this guy is absolutely tops, and so, I won't, it's gonna take a minute. It's twelve o'clock, I've sped this up to be, uh, you know, ten minutes, but it's the notes I took, and I'm doing some paraphrasing, paraphrasing, mostly direct quotes from him. His job, uh, relating to the counties, the League of Oregon Cities, is a risk pool, helping the counties reduce their risk. The name of the, of his presentation was Marijuana Moving Forward. The title really didn't represent, uh, his, his opinion, uh, his opinions necessarily. But he, he's been, uh, a US Attorney for eighteen years, uh, the US Department of Justice. Uh, he has an office in Portland, Eugene, and Medford, they have a hundred and twenty-five employees. Since two thousand twelve, Attorney Williams has chaired the Marijuana Working Group, twenty-nine years as a prosecutor. Bear in mind, these are notes, I'm, I'm, uh, abbreviating here, helping the public understand the power that his people have to investigate and charge citizens. Department of Justice has a very active civil rights team. Oregon's nat, protecting Oregon's natural resources, environment, hate crimes, state and local partners. He made the point, Oregon is diverse, it's geographically the ninth largest state in the US, but his job is to reduce especially violent crimes. And you'll see how this relates to marijuana, uh, as we, as, as I move here. Recovering citizen losses taken by criminals, power of Russia and China, stealing our technology, secrets and, and financial crimes, of course. Make no mistake, Oregon has national and international drug traffickers, that is a direct quote. The huge opioid crisis epidemic, forty years later, Big Pharma Lobby lied about not being addictive. We know where that story goes now. He believes the public is also being misled, especially argues about the risk of addiction, and he mentioned, of course, marijuana. Uh, Oregon is marijuana-friendly, use here surpasses the navary, the national average by two to one. He referenced, we're close to Humboldt County, Oregon is way overproducing, going illegally to other states, commonplace. His involvement, the DOG, Department of Justice, involved, emphasized, we have a significant black market here. Now, he's speaking for all of Oregon, but he's very familiar with Medford and, well, the whole state. Cannabis industry affects cultural breakdown, our schools, cities, counties, law enforcement, tribes, and families. No question, it attracts the criminal element, and they all carry guns. I believe you, and we talked about one-on-one, uh, you know, uh, no surprise what comes over in the middle of the night, what could be coming over in the middle of the night. Compounded by the state underfunding their responsibility to combat. So that was a little bit of a jab there, but it's true. OLCC, OSB, and OHA working very hard to battle but only scratching the surface. Collateral costs, environmental and water degradation, public health and public safety, many illegal grows on our public lands and forests, it's not going away. He is challenging everyone, take the responsibility to review the studies. In some ways, the medical marijuana is a Trojan horse, he was quick to point out, he's not an alarmist, but a problem solver. Many, many proponents are making a lot of false claims and, and vigorously pushing those claims, resulting, resulting in growing opposition to even the medical use, the other side is saying, okay, doesn't work. Very high levels of THC contact, content, he made the point, this is not your Woodstock marijuana anymore. And then he says, uh, pot, uh, anymore? He, he usually called it pot, but can relate to schizophrenia, long-term brain damage, emotional reactivity, many political, legal, and competing interests. Sometimes not about the facts, but people with differing views are shamed and attempts at silencing them. The high levels of THC can lead to substance abuse, well documented. And then he really emphasized, why does debate and dialogue matter? Talked about a youngster, I was telling Council Huddle this the other day, eleven-year-old, his buddy spoke publicly and said, "My friend comes to school high every day." So there's more, uh, I can put this on my website, I think the, the primarily thing is where, what's happened? The little growers getting squeezed out, the big companies coming in, the black market aspect. And he also, one more thing, Mr. Chair, uh, two things actually, he suggested Googling smart approaches to marijuana. And then finally, he said, "I recommend the book Dreamland by Sam Quinones." Thank you, that's all.
All right, Commissioner Gold?
Uh, I've just got a couple of things here, um, I've set up a workshop for June twelfth, that's when all the commission, uh, the superintendents of school will be here, as well as SWAC, the dean up in, um, down in Brookings, and also, Patty Scott will be here. Also, the city managers have been invited, and at that time, we will highlight all of their successes, because I think the districts can learn from each other, what are they doing to be successful in various areas? And there are some real good things happening, I've visited with all of the superintendents to discuss this. I've also discussed, um, possible intern program, and we will be talking about that, and I'm going to be sending them some information on that program, but as far as the intern program goes, unless we have buy-in from the schools, it won't work, so that's, that's what we're trying to get here. Then the other thing I'm gonna, gonna discuss is the CTR recycling roll car, carts. They're going to be rolled out in the urban growth areas and also the Cape Ferello area, starting, uh, June first. And right now, CTR has to pay eighty-eight dollars per ton to get rid of their recyclables. Previously, they used to get seventy-five dollars a ton from China, but China's no longer taking any of our recyclables. So we're gonna be paying three dollars and seventy-nine cents per month, but they'll have smaller carts available so that folks won't have to pay as much. And also, they're gonna be putting out a mobile app for education on what's recyclable and so forth. That's it.
Well, I might take about seven or eight minutes myself here, this might be the longer, one of the longer Commissioner comments I've had, but I want to talk about a concern that I have here in the county. And let me ask County Council this, um, is an ethics violation a crime?
I don't think so, they, they get reviewed by the Oregon Government Ethics Commission, they're not prosecuted, but there may be, there may be a overlapping area where something that is an ethics violation could be a crime. But I, again, I'm, I don't enforce crimes and I don't enforce ethics violations, so it's somebody else's expertise there.
Well, um, I think when I ran for my off for this seat, um, everyone in the county was well aware that my wife and I stepped away from our business many, many years ago, and I want to clear this up so that everyone understands fully. My wife and I retired basically from our public position, um, in oh-nine, and we moved here and having already built the house and formed a foundation called Dreams, Hope, and Faith Foundation. Dreams, Hope, I was seated on the board, as a founding director, and seated on the board of Dreams, Hope, and Faith Foundation. It's a, a foundation to help kids that have had horrible starts to their lives, as well as their families, to get them back on track, help them get back on track, and offer them services at no cost to them. Dreams, Hope, and Faith has always been funded through private donations, and it's always been a select group that are, are monthly donors on a, uh, on an annual basis, and then we also have occasionally, um, some outside donors that'll just stop by and throw a hundred dollars a- have occasionally some outside donors that'll just stop by and throw $100, a check in the donation can. Dreams, Hope, and Faith Foundation has never met its financial needs for the year. I'm not saying this to brag about it, but it is the facts. My wife and I have continued to support the shortcomings of that foundation personally. My wife and I have never, ever taken a dime of money from that foundation. My wife and I have never taken any available tax write-offs because of the foundation. We have never used our ranch in any way to prosper or any financial gain for us, any family member, or anyone known to us through that foundation. When I was seated in, or elected in November, I announced to the Board of Directors of that foundation, which is a 501(c)(3 legally formed through the state, that I would be stepping away from the Board of Directors of the foundation, and the day-to-day operations would, from that day forward, be given to my wife, Bonnie, and then we have also hired someone at the foundation at our own expense to help meet the shortcomings that she will face. This week, I was contacted through the State of Oregon that I have an ethics violation against me. It was brought because of my website, which is put up here through our, through JJ in our office. And what it shows is a hyper, what's called a hyperlink, and it highlights Dreams, Hope, and Faith Foundation. Now, there was no advertisement on this, it just says that, what I just stated. Recently, I shifted gears, my wife and I, my wife Bonnie and I threw our energy into developing a nonprofit called Dreams, Hope, and Faith Foundation that benefits the children. I didn't say go there. I didn't say please donate, I just made a statement, a categorical statement. From that, this person has alleged that I am seeking profits through the foundation, I am using the county's website to promote a Christian foundation, that I am personally going to profit from this, or that the county's website is providing a platform for people to go to my foundation and donate money that would not normally be available, and that I can make gain from that. Not anything in this world is farther from the truth. Since this has been on our website, on the county's website, I have received no donation from anyone that is not the standard monthly donors that we have. We have not received a miscellaneous donation in Dreams, Hope, and Faith for the fiscal year of 2019. And it was really, really disheartening to me. I will read part of the complaint. Mr. Pash encloses a copy of the complaint. During this phase, it is a preliminary review, the law requires you to respond to it, and I have had to since contact the Government Ethics Commission and also file with the DOJ. The objective of this preliminary review is to determine if the cause of this complaint By law, I am allowed to request, and I didn't need to because it was provided, the actual complaint. And I will read the complaint. Narrative, Commissioner Pash is using a county website to promote his personal business. There is a link to his website on the county's page, and the website asks for donations, which incidentally, you have to click through three pages of my website to find the donations page. We are a very small community, and I am in the process of establishing a news organization for our local radio station, KCIW in Brookings. Since I will be working with Mr. Pash in my role as the KCIW news director, I would hope that you will not, or that you will understand my request to keep my name private regarding this complaint. And if something falls within your purview and you choose to follow up, I will, of course, be reporting on this, so I would like to be kept informed. The complainant is Lori Gallo Stoddard from Brookings, Oregon, and she claims to be the news director of KCIW. It saddens me that people in this county, finally, I would hope, see that this board is trying to work together and get this county back on track, and you finally have, in my opinion, some commissioners that want to look to bring revenue into this county. And people are still wanting, it's like a, I want to say it's like an old crow that finds a carcass on the street, and he just keeps flying up and pecking a little bit at it every week, until you peck the flesh off of something, and they don't want to work anymore, because it's so disheartening to come to work because of all the negativity, and it just, it drives our government in the ground. What Ms. Stoddard failed to show everyone in her complaint is Ms. Gold's website. On Ms. Gold's website, it has a hyperlink for KCIW, and it hyperlinks her into an interview that Ms. Gold did on the radio several weeks ago. When you open that page, the very first thing you see on that page is a great big button, and it says, please donate here. Now, the difference is, if Ms. Stoddard would have done her homework, she would have learned that under Oregon law, 501(c)(3s are legal to post on a government website, as long as the person posting gets no financial gain from that posting. The website, or the foundation can get a financial gain, but the person that is posting it cannot. What Ms. Stoddard failed to realize is, this is the illegal activity, because this is a privately held radio station, run through donations and through a private company, and as far as I know, I do not believe it's a 501(c)(3, I might be speaking out of turn, but in my brief inspection of it, I didn't notice it as a 501(c)(3, and by her asking for donations through Ms. Gold's website, she is in fact in violation of Oregon law. And I don't mean Ms. Stoddard, I mean Ms. Gold, you could be brought up on an ethics violation for this because you're allowing it. I have been asked through the Board of Ethics that council look into this, and I don't know if you have yet, council, and you've had a conclusion on this, but I was told by the Board of Ethics that this should not be on Ms. Gold's website.
We'll take it off.
Oh, yeah. So, Commissioner Pash, I have not-
It ain't simple anymore.
Thank you. I have not examined whether the posting on Commissioner Gold's webpage is an ethical violation. Again, those are, those are investigated by Oregon Government Ethics Commission, the people who contacted you, and it's also, I don't, I would, it is my role to keep the county out of legal trouble on any level, but at the same time, I can only do what I'm aware of, and it was only brought to my attention very recently, what's going on. And so, for the record, and there was a suggestion that I review every posting on our website by everyone in the county, and I think that's a big task, but what I will intend to do is to share this information by a broadcast email and let everyone police themselves as best they can, but at least give them the guideline. So, that's my goal right now, is to put out a broadcast email to recommend everybody check their postings for hyperlinks to for-profit entities and disable them or remove them as best they can.
I'd like to conclude with this. This county for too long has had so much tearing at this board, and I again will offer the olive branch to this board, the failures of this board in the past, and let's move this forward, and let's stop with all the negative stuff, let's stop with simple silly things like this in the community, and please try and help us to move this county forward to get our bills paid and to the best thing for the constituents of this county. And that's all I have to say. Council Huddle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to follow up with a couple of items of business, just for housekeeping. We did have an exec session. I wasn't sure if we came out of exec session and that the board directed us to proceed as discussed in exec session, but I, my understanding is that's a consensus of the board.
It is.
Okay, good. And then I just had one notice. We had bidders on the Brookings Head Start Project. Today, I sent out a notice of intent to award on that project. All the bids came in above our budget, and the state law gives us the ability to negotiate with the lowest responsive responsible bidder, that's Adroit Construction. They're mostly local, Rogue Valley firm. We had two bidders, Osland out of Grants, Pass, Adroit out of Ashland, more or less. And again, we'll be negotiating with them and trying to bring back a contract for the board to award on Wednesday. We'll let the board know. So, just wanted to have that, and I'll just put this in the record for JJ there.
Is that it, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Adjourned.
I learned something.